So, thank you very much. We are expecting all board members here tonight. Some are running late, but we have a full agenda, so we'll get going. And before I do the roll call, let me first call out the name of our new superintendent. We welcome Dr. Toni Jones to her first board meeting. We look forward to working with you for the betterment of the schools.[34.61][34.61][applause] So, welcome.
Thank you.
So, I'm glad I made that introduction because now we have another board member to -- present at the moment is -- this is the Board of Education regular meeting for December 13th, 2016, and present is Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Phil Dwyer, Ms. Tricia Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli, and Mr. John Llewellyn. So if I could ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a full agenda tonight, and so I'm hoping that we can make concise comments and questions on individual items. I'm going to suggest that under new business, several of those items that are needed to be voted on are annual items or every five-year items that we have to do, and so hopefully that won't take a lot of time to get through that part of the agenda, which will allow us more time on other parts of the agenda. So with that stated, let me go to our student representatives and see who wants to go first. Okay? Ludlow will go first.
Evening, everyone. I'm Sean Oppenheimer, for those that don't know. So first, I want to welcome Dr. Jones to Fairfield. I know you bring a lot of experience with you, and I look forward to seeing what you can do with our schools. All right. So first, I want to say that Alumni Day happened. It is -- I believe we talked about it last time, but it's the day before Thanksgiving where a bunch of people that have graduated in the past come and share their experiences about college. It's really helpful because we're all applying to the same schools, so we get to see what people that we know have to say about them. And we had a huge number of 204 people come, which I was glad to see 204 people that I thought I would never see again.[191.12][191.12][laughter] We also had the Pulsera Project happen at school. It's an -- it was run by the Spanish Club. The Pulsera Project is -- well, it's a national project. It's a nonprofit organization where they try to empower people from Nicaragua to make bracelets and bags, and they attach a tag with their name and face on it, so you get to see who made the bracelet that you're going to buy. In order to help people invest more time in education, in order to make sure that they can have more money for, say, food, they make these bracelets, and we get to enjoy them here, and they look really cool. Even Mr. Hattis bought a few. I'm glad to say that Ludlow raised $1,500 doing it, which I'm really proud of because of the ripple effect, the positive ripple effect that happens just from Fairfield-Ludlow. Also, the blood drive happened recently. It happened, I believe, on December 5th, and that is where students who are 17 and 18 can sign up to donate some of their blood, and each time someone donates, it saves three lives, which there were a lot of lives saved. I saw a lot of people donated. And they give you a sticker that says that you saved three lives, which I think is honestly cooler than a sticker saying you voted. Also, the school climate survey happened. For those that don't know what the school climate survey is, it's a survey where you take it during English class and ask questions related to how you feel about the school, like whether you've been bullied by another student, even an adult, and it asks if you reported it, and if so, why or why not. Also asks if you have adequate use of technology, whether you feel you belong, do you participate in activities, and it just gets an overall sense of what happens at school. Believe it happened at all the middle schools and the high schools, and I think it's a great idea to see how students actually feel about their school and gain some insight. Finally, the LGBTQ forum happened last Friday. It's a place where students can discuss topics and issues related to the LGBT community. I'm glad to see that there's such a place because these are issues and topics that I know were not discussed in my parents' generation of classrooms, so I'm glad to see that we can be open about how it all plays a role inside school and to make sure that nothing that would make anyone upset happens. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So I just want to start off by saying congratulations to Ward for winning the Thanksgiving football game. So at the football game, the Ward and Ludlow cheerleaders and dance team performed a halftime show, and it was a combined performance. And while I couldn't be there, I heard rave reviews about it from both parents from both schools, and some even said it was the best halftime high school performance they have ever seen, so I thought that was very nice to hear. Recently, the first weekend of December, the Fairfield-Ludlow Theater Department performed "The Bridge of San Luis Rey," which is written by Thornton Wilder, and it's about five people who are on a bridge, and it shows like what happened to them and like how they passed away on the bridge and why it was caused. And it was a different experience for the actors at the Fairfield-Ludlow Drama Department because last year they did a more of a comedic play, and now they're doing a more serious, dramatic play. So I thought it was a very nice thing to see, like a bunch of variety, and I thought it was a very great performance. Upcoming on December 21st and 22nd, we had the Fairfield-Ludlow Candlelight Performance featuring the Ludlow Chamber Concert and Women's Choir, Wind Ensemble, Jazz Band, two of the three a cappella groups, the Close Harmonies, which is a coed group, and the Aria Group, which is an all-women's a cappella group, Chamber Orchestra, and it's going to be a magical holiday experience, and I hope everyone will be able to join. Lastly, we have the Bella Boutique up and running. It had its opening day last December 8th, yes, December 8th, and it was a very big success. I'm a part of it, and I was like very happy to see the outcome of it. It's a student-run boutique run by the Fairfield-Ludlow merchandising class, and it's a great way for students to learn how to run a business, how to work in retail. We buy from wholesalers, so we get a mass of amount of merchandise that we sell, and it's a great way to learn how to manage money and prepare for the big world out there. And we also have the opportunity to make handmade items, and some of the handmade items that we made were bath bombs, galaxy soaps, cosmetic bags, oven mitts, and candles. And a portion of our profits go to the Bridgeport Rescue Mission, and if some of you aren't familiar with this mission, it demonstrates the love of God to the hungry, homeless, and addicted throughout coastal Fairfield County, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. They serve men, women, and children fighting poverty from the inside out, and they provide a place of hope and dignity transforming lives through the New Life Program by offering education. So we are very proud of that, and it's still running, so if you would like to come by, it's in the Fairfield-Ludlow Library and Media Center, and I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our representatives from Fairfield-Ludlow High School? Ward.
Welcome, Dr. Jones. Nice to have you. So it's been a busy but quiet month for Ward. We also had our Alumni Day where they were on a panel, and we got to ask them questions and see how college life is. We also, during Thanksgiving, we concluded our fall sports against Ludlow. Good game, guys. And we started our winter season, so it's off to a great start. Can't wait to go to games. We also, like them, we have our own store at Ward called Trends for the merchandising classes, and they make stuff, and they get to handle the money and their retail and stuff. So it's a really good experience for everyone that's involved. I was involved in it last year. It was very, very cool.
So in addition to all of that, college app season is continuing. We have our students getting their early action, early decision results coming in from like early December to December 15th, I believe. I've already seen some of my fellow students getting accepted into like their first choice colleges, and I'm happy to say that I've seen some of my friends getting into Cornell and Brown, and I'm really proud of them. It's certainly a somewhat stressful time for our seniors, or applying regular decision, but we're getting a lot of help from our teachers in, you know, reconstructing our college essays and like a lot of help from our guidance counselors and stuff, so we have them to thank. Also, we're preparing for Carolan, which is similar to Ludlow's candlelight performance. We have these in-school performances soon, and I know that the public performance is next Tuesday, so you guys should check that out because ever since I transferred to Ward, it has been nothing but extraordinary.
Thank you. Any questions for our students from Fairfield-Ward High School? Cummings. Okay, well, thank you very much, as always. Whoop, Mr. Patton.
This -- neither of you mentioned this, but there was some kind of holiday festival this past weekend, right? Is there anything to report on that? It was something to do with the music department and fundraising? It was like a kind of a flea market kind of fair? No? Anything?[747.73][747.73][laughter] Didn't want to put you on the spot.
Oh.
Yeah. Good turnout.[756.88][756.88][laughter]
Are you sure?
Yeah. Ward is awesome, so of course, yeah, we're all involved.
Okay. Thank you very much. Again, you're welcome to stay as long as your time and studies allow you to, or slip out as we're in the middle of a conversation. Onto public comment. Any member of the public may come forward to speak on an agenda item, and if you speak on an agenda item now that is up for vote, you won't be able to speak on that same agenda item when it is up for vote, so you can choose either now or when the item is up for vote. Anybody wishes to come forward on a discussion item? Feel free to come forward. State your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Kristin McCarthy-Wehhe. I live at 1625 Melville Avenue. I serve as state representative here in Fairfield, as well as the chair of Fairfield Careers Community Coalition, and I would like to echo the welcome to Dr. Jones as well. I'm here tonight before we get the presentation, so I don't want to spoil any of the news that we're going to hear from Bob Francis from RISAP, but I just want to make sure that everyone here is aware of the ongoing work of the Coalition and is comprised of a number of members, your board chair being one of them. We have Karen Campbell here from Ward, Jen Jacobson is here, Denique Vitima Lewis from Positive Directions, a number of folks. The work that we do is to help prevent substance use and abuse among our young people, suicide prevention, and promote wellness and healthy choices. A lot of the things that we do are a little bit below the radar, and we're working to change that. We're in the process of creating new leadership. We've adopted bylaws. In the beginning of January, we'll be inviting you to join us for kickoff and rollout, and the result of all this work is some positive results. So I welcome the opportunity to talk further with any of you about this work at any point, and I'm grateful that Mr. Francis is here today to share the results of the survey that you all approved in the spring that will give us the data that we need to make the choices for our young people and families to best serve them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk on any topic that relates to an agenda item? Seeing nobody come forward, thank you very much. Onto presentations and the recognition of PTA delegates, and that's Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, this is the annual time of year when we recognize all of the Board of Education representatives of the different PTAs around town, and thank you for the work that you've done. You either spend many hours here or many hours at home watching on Fair TV, so thank you for that. And so if you could just come up and introduce yourself and say which PTA you represent, that would be great. Thank you.
Don't be shy. We know some of you are out there, so start coming forward.
Hello. I'm Adam Kang, representing Riverfield PTA.
I'm Linda Erickson, representing Sherman School, and my son just told me today that you came to his classroom, so I was very pleased to hear that. Thanks.
I'm Robin Bernier, and I'm representing the Burr Elementary School.
Michelle Fleischer, representing Jennings School.
Jill Bennett, representing Osborne Hill. Welcome to Fairfield.
Pamela Carter, also representing Osborne Hill.
Bonnie Rotelli, Septa, and Stratfield.
Gina Luje, Roger Ludlow Middle School.
Moni Sudakoff, Fairfield Woods Middle School.
Jen Jacobson, Fairfield-Ludlow High School.
Jill Vergara, Sherman. I think that's it.[1044.13][1044.13][applause]
Anything else that you wish to say? Nope. So you should recognize that the nine of us always assume that one of you who introduced yourself, or maybe two, are future Board of Education members.[1065.23][1065.23][laughter] So please stay engaged with the work that we do. Thank you. Item B, Aon, update on health insurance. So I invite Aon and our finance director to come forward. Who wants to start the conversation? And there's an abbreviated report that we have because, of course, we've joined Partnership 2.0, and so it's not as detailed as we normally do in December, but it's enclosure number one.
Dorie Mansell, Director of Finance. To my left is Carlton Lindgren, and to my right is Joel Chamberlain. They're our Aon consultants, and they will take us through an analysis of an update on health insurance.
Morning, evening.[1123.13][1123.13][laughter] Yeah, it's a three-page enclosure. The first page represents the reserve analysis. Basically, we set a reserve at June 30th of 2016, when the account went from self-funded to the fully insured State Partnership Plan 2.0. The board needs to reserve money at June 30th for claims that were incurred prior to June 30, 2016, but paid after June 30, 2016. So we have information through November of '16. Look at the total column all the way on the right. For the five months, totals $1,512.91. We expect in the next seven months that number to grow to $1,595. In addition, you have to add the $120,000 that you had to pay to Cigna to process those runoff claims, so the total comes to $1,715. And then if you turn your attention to the number on the bottom right, very bottom right, is the number that we set for the reserve at 630.16. So as far as I'm concerned, spot on. Page two and three are actually a calculation of what we think, what Aon thinks your expenses would have been had you remained self-insured on your own plan versus the costs under the partnership plan. So page two, I won't go through the calculations, I'll just ask you to look at line 15 all the way on the right. Totals $32,171. Okay? So that would have been what we give you for the cost, the much more detail that Mr. Dwyer was talking about, to explain what the cost would have been for seven of '17 to seven of '18 had you been on your own. Okay? Page three compares that to the costs that you're currently paying to participate in the State Partnership Plan, which is that first column, $27,674, what we expect the State Partnership Plan premiums to be for the '17, '18 fiscal year, which is $29,553 versus the calculation we came up with of $32,170. So we checked this just to make sure that it's still a prudent financial decision to be in the State Partnership Plan, and to the tune of, you know, $2.6 million, it appears That's pretty much it.
Okay. Questions from board members on where we stand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Mr. Llewellyn.
I guess I have two questions. First question is, what's your role going forward now that -- I know you did all of our calc sports when we were self-insured. Are you going to continue to have a role?
Yeah, we continue to monitor experience through the state plan. One of the things that -- I mean, we have experience through November from Cigna, but we only have experience through September from the state because it takes them so much longer to provide the documentation to us. So we continue to do that. We continue to project forward to make sure that you're still getting a good deal, and there's a whole host of other issues so far that have come up. I mean, in terms of placing retirees, I mean, you had a plan with ITT Hartford that actually refused to continue to take those folks because the numbers had changed, so we had to find a home for all of those folks.
Anytime there's a question on Affordable Care Act, they're bidding our flexible spending account this year, so.
Any legislative issues that come up and so forth?
And what would have changed that the Hartford didn't want to invite us back?
Well, the size of the group.
Okay.
Because a lot of the folks that were enrolled in those plans moved over to the state plan, and it got to the point where it was so small that they said, you know, we don't have any interest in a group that size any longer, which, you know, I didn't really think they were going to do, quite frankly, but they did.
Thank you. And then I guess the other question is more general. We had talked, I thought, at the last meeting about the $1,700,000 being funded toward this year's health care. Is that a different $1,700,000 we're talking about, or is that a same $1,700,000?
Through the superintendent.
Through the chair to the chair.
I would imagine to the finance director. I think those are two different numbers, but.
Well, the $1,700,000 is the IBNR.
Correct.
That's in the medical retention fund.
Right.
I'm not sure what your question is about.
I thought there was a conversation at the last meeting.
As of June, was there more money than the $1.700,000 in the medical retention fund?
Yes.
And what happened to those funds? Is, I think, Mr. Llewellyn, your question.
That's correct.
It's still there. There's after these numbers that Carlton just spoke about, there's about a million and a half.
Okay. So it's not a dissimilar number, and that number, with that million and a half, it's going to be used to pay health care costs to the state for the current fiscal year?
It'll pay the remainder of the claims and fees.
The $5,090,000?
And, yes, the portion of it for our part of the Connecticut Partnership Plan.
Okay.
Yeah, the use, it's not exactly a fluctuating number, but the balances that are left after we account for these claims.
Mm-hmm.
Is essentially a portion of it will be used to fund this year's medical costs so that we could save some money in the budgets, and a portion is used to mitigate the reduction of ECS funding that happened to the town. It's essentially town money, but it's going to be split between those two uses.
Okay. Because it is in a town fund, not in a Board of Ed fund, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no longer an IBNR reserve. It's being held by the state.
Right.
Because they're responsible for the runoff now because of the funding arrangement.
They're responsible for the runoff, so.
So the premium that you're paying towards the State Partnership Plan, a piece of that goes to fund this type of reserve, but because you're fully insured, when runoff happens, so if you were to terminate and move to some other arrangement.
Right.
They still have the responsibility of paying those runoff claims. They, the state.
Runoff claims since July 1.
Since July 1.
Since July 1, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And our agreement with the town is that whatever that balance is after we pay the actual claims is the maximum that the Board of Ed will be responsible for and how they divide it between current year's health plan, health insurance costs, and to mitigate the ECS, they won't be coming back to us for any more in the event that claims exceeded what people were assuming, but we can see from this report that you're pretty good at forecasting.
Thank you.
One other thing that I will say that Aon has been helpful to, not necessarily part of their contract, is that, as you know, whenever you make a change from one insurance program to another and impact 1,400 staff, there are lots of questions and lots of forms and lots of just stuff that has to happen, and Aon was very helpful to the Board of Ed and their employees in making that transition. Even if it maybe reduced their consulting fees in the future, they showed real professionalism in serving this Board of Ed, so I thank you for -- and thank your people at Aon for doing that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I believe we now have item 5C on the agenda, Regional Youth Adult Social Action Partnership Survey Results. Mr. Robert Francis, the executive director of that agency, and he may need a half second or so or a half minute to get his PowerPoint up and running, but I would suggest that those of us who are in the middle of the screen probably should move around to some of the front chairs. And I would ask my board members to aid in moving this agenda item along. If you could make notes on the PowerPoint that is over there so that Mr. Francis could get through the whole presentation and then do Q and A.
Well, I want to add my welcome to many, to Dr. Jones. Welcome to the school system here. My personal experience with the excellence of this school system is I have four grandchildren in the Fairfield Public Schools and could not be more pleased. So from Ward to Stratfield, so where we are. Can that bank of lights right up at the top be turned off? Okay? Is it okay for the board members to be a little in the dark? Okay.
First one, we're good.
So a little bit of history. RISAP did the first survey of young people, grade seven through 12, in the public schools in Greater Bridgeport. We do all six communities. We actually are doing five of the six communities, Bridgeport, Fairfield, Stratford, Monroe, and Trumbull. And we have been doing this since 1985, and we've done it every three years, and the last one we did two years ago because of some requirements on federal grants for some of the communities that we did. When we started in 1985, the survey was completely a substance abuse prevention survey. When we started in 1985, the survey was completely a substance abuse prevention survey. So, all of the questions in the survey were basically demographic and relating to young people's use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. Around 1997, one of the communities, Trumbull, tried a new survey out that we got excited about because it wasn't just looking at the pathology of young people in terms of just drug use, but it also started to take a look at young people's strengths. And one of the things that I've learned a long time ago in my work at RISEP is that no problem ever got solved by a problem, you know, that young people's strengths are what overcome things, and the Search Institute, who has now surveyed somewhere around 40 million young people across the United States over the years, they've been doing this survey. They have one major hypothesis that they've proved over and over again, is that the more assets young people have, the less likely they are to be involved in risky behaviors, and the more likely they are they're going to grow up and lead healthy, vital lives. And so, from 1997 to the present, every three years, we've been doing the Search Institute survey, which also looks at the substance abuse data, it looks at other risky behaviors of young people, which you'll see as we're going through the survey, and it gives you some idea about what a community can do to raise those assets, you know, in the community that offset the deficits that are here. So, we do about a 15% sample of students, we do grade seven through 12, and so, let's get in. So, that means we've served about 800 youth were surveyed. This is their racial and ethnic background, and out of the 40 developmental assets that young people have, Fairfield had an average of about 22, which is slightly higher than the national average, and you can see that the assets peak in eighth grade, and then they go down, and as you go through the assets, you'll understand this a little bit better because as young people start breaking away from their families, as they're getting ready for college and things like that, you'll just naturally see some of the assets go down, but almost 20 in the 12th grade, you know, is the highest in our region here, and generally tends to be pretty high. I was surprised going through this particular survey, it's the first one I've gone through this year, is, and I don't, there are very, very few areas where the Fairfield students didn't improve over the last survey that we did. So, I'm not going to go through all of these assets, but the assets are broken down into two categories. External assets, which are positive experiences and support that young people receive from formal and informal connections to the community, and internal assets, and the internal assets are those things the community and family can nurture within youth so that they contribute to their own development. So, as you take a look at these, the external assets are broken down into areas of support, and this is where families, family communication, other adults, caring neighborhoods, caring school climates, and parents involved in schooling measure the support categories. You can see that family support in Fairfield was high two years ago, it's even higher today at 84% of young people reporting that their family gives them high levels of love and support. Other adult relationships also went up, caring neighborhoods went up in a marriage your way, and so you can see there. Empowerment is another one, this is where young people feel involved in their own decision-making around schools, these tend to be a little bit lower, where the community, young people feeling whether the community values them or not, young people being used as resources by people, in other words, are they playing a role in decision-making about what they can do. These increase in a major way from seventh grade through 12th grade, that you'll see from the full report when you get a chance to go through that. Young people providing service in their community to others, and public safety, feeling safety in different areas, so. And then you've got boundaries and expectations, this is where young people, this is where safety, overall safety is provided, so it's family boundaries, school setting boundaries, neighborhood boundaries, you know, having adequate adult role models in the community, how peers influence them in a positive way, and what kind of expectations parents, teachers, and others have on them. The one that grew the most here was positive peer influence, and we all know that starting in about seventh grade, peers have a very large influence on our young people, and actually as they grow older, have even a stronger influence than some of the adults that are in their life, and this went up by almost 10%. So, as much as we say about negative peer relations, relationships in Fairfield are very positive as far as young people are concerned. And then we talk about how young people use their time, and so are they involved in creative activities, youth programs, religious community, time at home. So, you see an 18% of young people here are involved more than three hours a week in music lessons, theater, other arts, and things like that, and then you see 77% of young people are involved in sports clubs, organizations. You can't quite add those two together, but if you did, you'd have 95% of young people being active in the community. We know that some people who are involved in youth programs are also involved in a great degree in creative activities as well, but this is a community that provides for its young people. There's a lot here for young people to do if they choose to get involved, you know, it's a community that's taking care of its young people. We also know that the asset of being involved, you know, in a faith community in some way, you know, is also very important to our young people. Internal assets, young people here are motivated to achieve, you know, they're engaged with their schools, they're engaged in their learning, 65% of young people doing, report at least doing an hour of homework every school day, they're bonded to their schools in terms of having school spirit. Reading for pleasure, you might think that's pretty low, but the young people, when you end up talking to them, they'll basically say, when do I have time to read a book? Or something like that. My oldest grandson, by the way, reads about two books a week, but he's on the nerd side of the scale, and is really is excited about that, so.
He's a live and on tape.
Yeah, and he will get me too, so. He's now about 6'1" in 10th grade, so it's like. Positive values, I'm always very impressed with this, when similar surveys are done with adults, young people score higher on these than most adults do. So, caring for people and helping others, equality in school, justice, you can see a major leap there, so a real appreciation of diversity and people different from themselves. You know, in the suburban communities, this 68% is almost 20% higher than the other communities, which came as a surprise. Integrity is very high, young people are honest to a fault, they're responsible, and, you know, about 50% of them believe it's important not to be sexually active, but their, you know, their values are quite strong. Social competencies, these are the things that we call almost the social intelligence things, social emotional intelligence with planning and decision-making skills, interpersonal competence, having empathy, sensitivity, friendship skills, cultural competence, being comfortable with people of other cultures, racial backgrounds, being able to resist negative peer pressure, peaceful conflict resolution, these are all the things that add up to social emotional intelligence, and when these things are strong, the academic things tend to be stronger as well. Positive identity, this is how young people feel, whether they've got control over the things that happen to them, this grows as the young people get older. Self-esteem stayed about the same, young people feeling like they have a sense of purpose, positive view of their future, you can see the data is actually quite strong. So, what do we assume about assets? Individuals don't need the entire range of assets to thrive, you know, we work with a lot of very challenged young people at RISEP, and if we find a young person's got 10 assets, that gives us 10 positive things to work with in order to build more assets in those young people. Having more assets is better than having a few, as you'll see from some of the slides later on, but having strong assets in one category may offset weaker assets in other categories. And continued exposure to these positive experiences, settings, as well as opportunities to gain and refine skills, it supports young people in their growth and gaining assets as they get older. So, we also took a look at, going back to the initial survey, but also the national government's also very interested in young people's substance use, and this is data that we have in the survey, there are four areas in the substance abuse area for the community to do something about if they're going to have an impact on substance use. So, a young person's 30-day use is something you can do, something about. A young person's perception of risk in using these substances is something to look at. Parental approval or disapproval of a young person's use is important, and then peer approval or disapproval of a young person's use is important. So, in taking a look at this data, for example, every single one of these areas is a reduction over 2014. A slight reduction in alcohol use, but you can see that alcohol use in seventh and eighth grade, one of the things that was unique about Fairfield survey this year is that we got to compare seventh and eighth with ninth through 12th, because we were able to do the survey on the computers for ninth through 12th grade, we weren't able to do that in seventh and eighth grade, so we ended up with two reports, and you'll see, you know, that you'll get two reports as well, so you'll see it reported this way. But you can tell by this data is that eighth to ninth grade is a critical decision-making point, and a critical point in terms of where we really, you know, need to focus energy in taking care of our young people as we're moving forward. So, you can see alcohol use in seventh and eighth grade is quite low, it increases to almost 55% by the time they're in 12th grade, an average of 36.5. The 24.5% of young people using alcohol in the last 30 days is down slightly from before. Tobacco use is probably the biggest success in this country in terms of tobacco use. We didn't have a single young person in seventh and eighth grade report having smoked tobacco in the last 30 days, which was pretty amazing. And then only 5.3% at the high school level for a low of 3.1%. We can remember back when we first started doing surveys that that 3.1% was 25, and, but there's also been a terrific role modeling among adults is, because adult tobacco use is down below 10% now too, so it's, you know, we've had a major success there. Marijuana use, 2.5% in seventh and eighth, 20.3 grades nine through 12, overall 13%, that's down from about 15% in the last survey. Prescription drug use, which I know a lot of the communities have a lot of concern about, especially opioids, and how opioid abuse has been leading to suicidal ideation on the part of some young people, it's not a very high figure that's up there, but when abused, you know, we need to pay some attention to it. Perception of risk, as young people are taking a look at, you know, what's the harm in terms of alcohol, so you see around 86% of seventh and eighth graders believe it's harmful, doesn't change much nine through 12. Tobacco, young people see the harm there at 92%. It's interesting that young people see tobacco as the most harmful of all the drugs that are out there, it also shows up in their use, you know, that they don't use it as much. Marijuana, very, very, by the time you get to high school, only fewer than half of young people believe that marijuana is harmful, and it's something to look at as Connecticut goes forward, you know, in taking a look at whether we legalize recreational use, we've legalized medical marijuana in the state of Connecticut, and there's a lot of research still to be had here, you know, in terms of the actual harm that's being done there. And prescription drugs, you can see is up there, you know, is in the harmful rate around the same as tobacco. Perception of parent disapproval, what we mean by this is this is young people believing about how their parents disapprove, and you can see those totals out there in the right-hand column, they're very high for all of these drugs. The lowest for marijuana, but it's still nine out of every 10 young people believe their parents strongly disapprove. Among peers, it changes quite a bit. Marijuana there also being quite low in comparison to the others when they're looking at it, okay? Alcohol trend data, this is 30-day use from 2002, 2016 is out there in the corner, when I was redoing the graphs, I couldn't quite figure out about how to put a 2016 on there, but if you get out there on the end, you can thank my friend Denise in the back for that, so. But you can see it's been steadily going down since 2005, and it's at its lowest rate since we've been doing surveys right now at 24.5% of young people who have used in the last 30 days. Here is where, the next four or five sets of slides will give you some idea about what we mean when we said the more assets you have, the less likely you are to be involved in risky behavior. So, if you've got 30 to 40, 31 to 40 developmental assets, that's that blue scale on the graph up there, and you can see there is a much less likely use that you're going to be involved in these substances with the more assets you have. The young people that have the 0 to 10, they're way down there on the scale, and they're much more likely to be involved in risky behaviors. This is by use and risk level, you see the same type of scale there. Perception of parent disapproval, parent disapproval means something, the young people that have 31 to 40 assets, their parents disapprove almost at the 100% level, it's pretty much the same for 21 to 30, and then it goes down to around 90, marijuana is the one that's down there a little lower, around 75 at the lower level. There's a difference in gender things on this survey, there are girls, females, students tend to be much higher in terms of assets than the boys are, except in three areas, and the three areas are safety, boys feel safer at 66%, feeling safe in their community, safe at home, safe there, the girls do not feel quite as safe, and girls, boys have higher self-esteem than the girls do, and they have more of a sense of purpose in life. I think both those last two have something to do with our glass ceiling thinking, and it's kind of funny because I think if you took a look at the academic records of your students, you know, in high school, you probably see girls achieving at higher levels than the boys are, that's true across our region, it's true across the country right now. Some people think that young men, and maybe not so young men, even the men in this room, feel a lot better about ourselves than we're actually doing in life, you know, so. There was a nice story that was told a couple of years ago, we were doing a lot of work on changing the age of jurisdiction in the state of Connecticut, and we were looking at adolescent brain research, and we had a woman from the Dartmouth Adolescent Brain Research Center that came, and she was talking about the adolescent brain is really not fully developed until you're 25 years old. That's for women. Men, they haven't quite figured it out yet, so. So, those are the gender differences. And then we took a look at about a dozen risk-taking behaviors. So, you can see the alcohol and drug data here, but alcohol use in the last 30 days, young people who were drunk in the last two weeks in 2016, it was 13%, which is down from 16%. Much higher in the high school grades, as you can see, almost nonexistent in seventh and eighth grade. Tobacco use, you know, at 3% is the lowest it's ever been, marijuana use was down by 3%, and illicit drug use, those are drugs like cocaine and heroin and other things like that, is pretty low at 2%, and remained about the same. Other risk-taking behaviors that we looked at, we looked at shoplifting, vandalism, group fighting, carrying a weapon for protection, threatening physical harm to someone, you can see all of those are down from where they were in 2014. I think the importance of this data to you is, this is your report, this is your community, if things concern you up there and things that you want to work on, it gives you some data to take a look at that. Young people seem to be less sexually active than they were a couple of years ago, it's not a big change from 16% to 14%, it's around 45% for high school seniors, gambled for money being down. These are sad or depressed most of the time, down slightly in the last month. This is one of these last. This is one of the, these last two are the only two areas where you had an increase in risk-taking behavior. Attempted suicide one or more times went up slightly to 9% from 7%. And eating disorders, anorexic or bulimic behavior went from 9% to 11%. We measured some other developmental deficits, being alone at home two or more hours. You can see there's no comparison there with 2014 because in 2014, the data point was different. That figure was three or more hours, not two or more hours. And on the next one, you'll see TV or video, more than three hours a day at 20, 23%. Being a victim of violence, down slightly in the last two years with a physical injury. And that's fighting with anyone. That ranges everything from domestic abuse to, you know, a fight with a sibling or a fight in the community where you sustained a physical injury. And then being at a drinking party was down by 7%, much higher in the higher grades than in the lower grades. These are the indicators of thriving youth. They're all pretty healthy. The first one up there is a pretty high measure, experiencing school success, 40.3. That means getting mostly As in school. And, you know, you can measure school success in a lot of different ways. You might measure that quite differently for young people who are in special education classes. You know, I know, and once again, I know I'm on tape, but in taking a look at my grandchildren, for example, my oldest would be very, very upset if he ever got a B in anything. And the youngest boy in that group is pretty happy with Bs and can even accept a C, you know? And he's fine with that, but he's very good at sports, and he figures he's going to be an NBA star someday. So, probably won't be, but he thinks that. I thought that too. That's why I'm sitting here doing a nonprofit agency. I thought the Boston Celtics would definitely want me at some point. So, exhibiting leadership, very, very high, and this is leadership anywhere. It's leadership in the family. It's leadership in the community. It's leadership in a group you're in. Helping others informally, this is, there are questions there about helping a grandparent or helping somebody in your family to helping, to doing community service work and things like that. Resisting danger, these are adolescents, by the way. They're experimenting with all kinds of behavior. So, to have even a quarter of them completely resisting, resisting danger, I think at times is pretty amazing. The valuing of diversity has been growing, quite high. Controlling impulsive behavior, this gets better as the young people get older. Young people are involved in their own personal health and overcoming adversity. That's really what we call resilience. And this is the ability to bounce back from negative things that go on in your life. And young people are doing pretty well there. This is a challenge, but you saw 22 out of 40, you know, developmental assets were there. Finishing up, this is just a summary, all young people need assets. Everyone can build assets. These young people, they've got teachers in their lives, they've got coaches in their lives, got family members, they have peers, they have business people, a lot of people that are there. All of them play a role in the community and have a responsibility in helping build assets with young people. It's an ongoing process, you know? We get better as we get older, hopefully. Relationships are absolutely crucial. The ability to form and sustain long-term relationships is consistent. As adults, it's very important for us to send consistent measures. You know, our behaviors can't be out of line with what we're telling people. Young people have incredible radar about that in terms of picking up, you know, what we're saying and what we're actually doing. And we can't say this just once. It's sort of an over and over and over again process. You know, we shouldn't be praising our young people to the point where they believe that they're terrific at everything. We should be giving them realistic feedback, but the positive should definitely outweigh the negative when we're looking at them. So, this is your Fairfield report, and I'm available for any questions. I think that the one thing I didn't say is that if you're part of PTAs or community groups or like Fairfield Cares and groups like that, you know, we end up doing this report to several different people in the community. We've done the Ludlow and Board Parents. I know we've done a couple of forums in Fairfield in the past, you know, anybody who would like to use this. The feedback that we get is that it's very valuable data in terms of, we've gotten feedback from the Fairfield Public Schools in terms of using this data in the health curriculum and focusing on particular things in health and social sciences and those areas. And it also becomes valuable for the community itself as they, as you go for community grants and things like that. You know, it's, we get an awful lot of requests over the course of time. Probably a week doesn't go by when someone's using this data for something to try to raise money.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, thank you, first of all, for the presentation. And my daughter is actually a freshman at Ludlow High School, and we just went to the freshman forum last month, and a lot of this looks familiar. One question I had, and I can't remember from last month, e-cigarettes. That doesn't fall under tobacco, does it?
It does not because the Search Institute hasn't upgraded their survey yet to include e-cigarettes.
Okay.
I don't even have good anecdotal data about how many young people are actually using them, so.
Okay, but that's something that perhaps moving forward, because it certainly is something, at least anecdotally I've heard, is becoming a growing issue. So, I think it would be helpful.
It's probably one of the reasons tobacco use is down by so much.
Right. Yeah. And then the other question I had is regarding online gambling. Is that something that, you know, in terms of risky behavior?
We didn't, I don't have the gambling data right on the end of my tongue, but I think it was somewhere around 15% of young people. That includes online as well as, you know, playing cards for money, gambling on sports events and things like that. So, so, it's coupled in with it, but it's not singled out by itself.
Got it. And we have, there is the more detailed report as well.
Yeah, there's a full, there's a full middle school report and a full high school report that has the answers to, there are like 180 questions. And so, you can get every single question by grade.
Okay.
And you can get that data in that level of detail. This is just a summary here.
Exactly, yeah. And I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember, is that posted on the website?
No, it's been published on the website before, but.
Yeah, I know it has in the past, but I think that would be helpful just because I'm sure there'll be lots of parents who'll have questions.
Mrs. Brown, know whether the full report will get posted to our website or has in the past?
We can, we usually provide a link to their website.
Provide a link to their website.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. McCormick.
I'm curious about the marijuana statistic, given how it's so prevalent in kind of the current topics and how it's been legalized by neighboring states. If it should come to Connecticut, I know it's hard to forecast, but what has been the impact on kids in, say, the high school area in the other states that have legalized it? And we're already at 20%. So, could that, I mean, would we anticipate a 50%, 100% increase in that?
We really don't know. You know, I think in Washington and Colorado, who have got quite a bit of history on this, there has not been a very big spike as far as young people are concerned. There has been increased use, but it hasn't been a lot necessarily. A lot more states have medical marijuana, of course, and we've just, here in the Northeast, we have Massachusetts and Maine that just legalized. And that'll put, I know Representative McCarthy-Gaye, you know, might be able to comment about this because they'll probably see a bill in front of the Connecticut Legislature this year to legalize. But I think a lot more research needs to be done about this. I don't think we know yet, Ms. McCormick.
Is that it? Any other questions? Any other questions? Mrs. Max and Cannelli.
Also, thank you so much for the presentation. Just going through the pages, some very quick questions. The 797 youth survey, is that the usual sample size?
It's usually between 15 and 20% of 7th through 12th graders.
And one thing is that I very much appreciate having the data disaggregated by 7th through 8th versus high school, because I think that total number, you know, it's heartening when you're seeing it improving, but the stark contrast, I think, very much would impact education and other supports in the schools so differently. So, I'm glad that you weren't able to do it, you know, as one single report. I think that was useful for you to, for us to see.
And before we move on, that seemed to be a happenstance event. Do you know whether in the future, even if both are computerized, will you still be able to disaggregate?
You can ask us to do that, and we can do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I found it useful going through it, you know? I mean, I think we were a little bit, you know, we ended up having to pay for two reports, but I think it was well worth it.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's quite all right. And I'd also had echoed Mrs. Gerber's question, not only just the e-cigarettes with the tobacco use, but vaping, the Jules, you know, they're coming out with something new faster than we can create policy. So, we now just try to have anything affiliated resembling tobacco products and trying to cover whatever new they come up with. But I would agree that I think that would be useful to tailor the survey to make, to broaden that definition, just so we don't think, or that we're exactly aware of what that usage is and if we need to be adjusting to that.
The past several years, we've done this survey, and we've done a supplemental survey with it. And we will go back to doing that probably in 2018, 19, whichever year we end up doing this again. And we can add questions like that if the Search Institute doesn't put them into their survey.
Okay. My question on the, it's coming off of the 30-day use, but obviously it appears on a few, is regarding the prescription drugs, were the questions tailored, and I can't recall from the survey, toward legal use or was that targeting illegal use? I mean.
It was targeting illegal use.
Okay, and it's clear to them what, that, I mean, someone who has a prescription for a painkiller due to a sports injury, injury is not bad, they're still taking it past that, I mean, is it clear from the phrasing of the question?
The drugs are mentioned by name.
Okay.
So, it's like Vicodin, Oxycodone, the Oxy, Percocet, things like that, tend to be the most abused of the opioids.
Right.
And, you know, you all know, if you've ever had a thing like a root canal, for example, they end up giving you 30, you probably needed one.
Right.
You know, for one day, and then they sit in your medicine cabinet and, you know, young people get at those things, so.
And then I had two other questions. On that one where you were talking about the resisting danger, I was just curious, how is that defined?
It's any risky behavior, you know? So, it can be from everyone, anyone offering you a drug, for example, or asking you to get involved in criminal behavior of some sort. It's anything that would be considered dangerous, you know? Stealing a car and going for a joyride.
So, that is actually rather a high number then? I mean, with such a, that's what I was curious about, if it was defined for them in such a broad range, if that really is a 24.6 as a percentage number, that's pretty good? I'm not saying we wouldn't want it higher, but when you consider the broad nature of the question.
I think it's really up to you whether it's, I don't like to judge actually any of the data there. I think this is really a community report, and it's like, we know the communities are very, very different. You know, we're a lot different here in the Northeast than other parts of the country, you know, where there's a lot more concern about particular things there, so.
My last question, and this is, I'm not sure that you can answer this, nor am I positive if Mrs. Leonardi would be able to answer this either. But as I was on the slides with the risk-taking behavior, it made me think of our TIPS hotline. And I was wondering if any of the data from that, percentage-wise, matches any of this? I don't necessarily think that's a question you're ready to answer right now, but I would be curious to know if there's some correlation or if, in fact, you know, say we were having much numbers that didn't seem to match up, the idea of, you know, for example, carried a weapon for protection, you know, that this has one number for our middle schools and our high schools. And I was curious if we were getting reports that, no reports, in which case there's no awareness of that out there, so truly this is just self-reporting? You know, that idea, again, of the, you know, attempted suicide, you know, are we getting any information of this through TIPS either? I was just, I don't know if that would be useful or not. I was just curious if that, if that's been helping to surface some of this as well.
I wonder if the question was broadened and say, is there anything in here that is a surprise? Or did the statistics ring true to just your experience in the district in your area of expertise? And then Mrs. Max and Cannelli, I think Mrs. Pitco.
That's it for me.
Yeah, that's it. So, we'll go to Ms. Pitco next.
On first glance at the RISAP data, I don't think there's anything in it that's a surprise. I will tell you that within the TIPS system, TIPS is our anonymous reporting system, anonymous and discreet reporting system that we put in place. I believe this is our third year with the TIPS system in place. While I don't think TIPS reveals everything, we've had quite a number of things that were reported through the TIPS system that have, in my opinion, in some instances, saved young people's lives and in other instances, helped young people who are struggling. And, you know, it identified to the adults around ways that they could intervene and support, from protecting youngsters from mean-spirited bullying kinds of behavior, but also we had, it is revealed, students who've been concerned for a friend due to anxiety and depression and other behaviors that were concerning to their friends. So, the system, in my opinion, has paid for itself multiple times over.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Pitco.
I just had a quick question. I remember that there was an option for parents to opt their students out of taking this. I was wondering if there's any data about parents opting anybody out of this.
I think the school system, people would probably know the answer to that better than we would. We know in classrooms, when it gets passed out, that there are always a couple of students that don't do the survey. And I don't know whether they were told by their parents not to do it or they just opted out themselves, so.
In the past, it's been a pretty small number. And I presume that if the headmaster thought that it had gone way up, for whatever reason, they'd come forward and say that. But I presume that it continues to be a small number. Any other questions or comments from board members on the report? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
One more question. Regarding kind of comparative data, you had said that the numbers seem, you know, relative to other regions perhaps to be okay. It's a community thing. I'm just curious, do you have data of like, you know, Northeast suburb typical or Midwest? I'm just curious kind of to see how the cultural norms differ, if they differ dramatically across different subsets.
We haven't done the comparison yet, you know, this year, but they do do that. The Search Institute will take a look at, you know, we can get the national data in terms of what was reported in any given year. And we've got about at least a dozen more communities in Connecticut that do the same survey. And so, we could get that data. We don't have it, but, you know, it could be accessible to us. It's something we could ask for.
Is it, if it's easy enough, that would be kind of interesting to kind of put this, give some perspective to what we're looking at.
Yeah. It's interesting in this region because you've got very, very different communities. I mean, you know, one of the things that was, when RISAP got started and we were looking at the substance abuse data, for example, one of the big surprises that came out of that substance abuse data was that substance use in the suburbs was actually higher than it was in Bridgeport among students who were in school, you know? And that came as a surprise to us, and that really mobilized the region and mobilized a lot of the suburban communities to start these local prevention councils and get task forces together to do something about it.
Right, because I think when you put it in perspective, you realize, ooh, you know, 20% or 36% is not great, or wow, that's so much better than other, you know? And I think it just, I think helps you focus on maybe areas that you want to focus on. Otherwise, everything is just like, okay, I don't know if that's good or bad, you know?
I think the urgency of data and stuff like it is it's one that affects your child. You know, I mean, a lot of, a lot of adults are saying, well, that's not my kid. And in fact, it could be your kid because you don't know the information. But if you know it's your kid and it's there, it becomes a lot more impactful to you. If you talk to young people about substance use and stuff like that, an awful lot of young people who are using will say, everybody does it.
Right.
And you can see by the data that everybody doesn't do it.
Right.
You know, three-quarters of the young people are not using anything, so.
Right, and it's kind of interesting that fewer kids think. Right, and it's kind of interesting that fewer kids think that marijuana use is dangerous compared to other things, and I, you know, and then, once it becomes legalized, I get concerned that they think even more so, hey, it's not bad, let's just do that for fun.
That's right.
And that's kind of a risk, and I think the sooner kind of we can see what the effects were at other places, the sooner we can kind of prevent, because I think prevention's better than waiting for it to happen, and then having to really attack a problem.
Yeah.
Thank you very much to you and your staff, this is always valuable information for us to have, but I know that our staff at the public schools, as well as many community agencies, as Mrs. McCarthy-Wehhe pointed out, they depend upon this information annually to guide their programming efforts, so thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the chairman of our policy committee, Mrs. Maxon Caneli, is next.
To make the motion?
Yes, thank you. That the Board of Education approved Policy 5141.3, Students' Health Assessments and Immunizations. Mrs. Maxon Caneli, I'll have Ms. Carnell be the seconder as a member of the committee. What do you wish to state or comment on? This was presented at the meeting last year, last, last meeting that we had, on November 15.
Well, I received no questions, so I opened this up to the board, I don't need to lecture people about a policy that they're all fine with, but if there are any questions that have just suddenly occurred to you, I would love to hear them.
If there are no questions, we'll go to public comment, as this is a voting item, any questions from board members? Seeing none, this is a voting item, so any member of the public that wishes to come forward to comment on Policy 5141.3A, please do. Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board for action. All in favor of the motion that's before us, that we approve Policy 5141.3, Students' Health Assessments and Immunizations, please raise your hand, aye. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Item A, Fairfield BoE Proposed Capital Non-Reoccurring Projects. Mr. Cullen, to remind the board that about two, maybe three years ago, we moved the non-reoccurring projects to be considered at this meeting and voted at the next, the first meeting in January, so that we could get through all the town boards and have time to bid and search for vendors, so that we could get this work done over the summer, and so that's the purpose of talking about the capital project sooner than we talk about the operating budget. Mr. Cullen, do you want to walk us through this? And this will be voted on at the next meeting, so you'll be able to have questions at the next meeting, if you don't have any at the moment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, allowing me to present the capital non-recurring projects for 2017, 2018. For the record, my name's Tom Cullen, I'm Director of Operations, and as Mr. Dwyer said, all of these projects come from our long-range facility plan, and our waterfall schedule is presented to the town in the Capitol Workshop Summit in September. So hopefully you all had an opportunity to review them. The total request is going to be for $2,785,000. It makes up six projects that are on the table of contents. First project is Fairfield Ludlow High School, this is the student parking lot in the back of the school building, it's a much larger project than our paving account can handle. This is the parking lot that the students pay for permits to park, we've been trying to maintain it and keep it striped to control the permits and for all the students, but it's got a lot of wear and tear. This is also the location where the contractor housed a lot of their equipment to do the Ludlow High School project, so it did see an awful lot of traffic and use, and generally it does get a lot of traffic and use, so we are proposing to reclaim it, we're working with the town on this. There's a company that comes in and actually reclaims all of the batuminus down to the base grade, and then the town helps us with the base grade to make sure it's level and sturdy, and then Tilcon Tomaso, another contractor, comes in and does two coatings of paving, and then we hire a third company to come in and do striping and numbering. We've seen great results with that this past summer, throughout the schools, good savings, and it's a very good product. We're also going to include with this project, something new we're trying, which is called a speed table. We're getting away from the speed bumps, they're taking too much abuse, they're too small, and we're moving at least at the two high school levels to what's called a speed table. It's a, it's a larger bump, it's, we can crosswalk it, stripe it, we did them at Ward High School, we're seeing excellent results, signage and everything, and they definitely slow down for these speed tables. So we're going to propose these on the Ludlow campus, and probably the loop that goes around to Rodja Ludlow Middle School. The next project is at Fairfield Ward High School. This is the Library and Media Center HVAC rooftop unit, this was a Board of Ed project, and when we went out to bid and did the engineering work, the bids came back almost double what we expected. It's a very large HVAC unit, as you can tell and see from the pictures, the biggest issue is the size of the crane that's needed onsite in front of the school to reach where this needs to be set, remove the old one, put the new one on. The unit is failing, we've been abandoning it for about five years, and so we put this in non-recurring. The lowest bid we got last year was $187,000 for this project, so we wanted to get it into non-recurring, we can reuse the engineering drawings, which is good, and we're hopeful we'll get good bid numbers to complete the project.
Sorry, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Were we saying here that it's failing, and that it has no life left in it? How old is it, do you know?
I believe it's original to 1995.
Okay, and how much have we spent on it in the last four or five years?
Well, a lot of the work's been done internally with our crews, contractors had trouble locating some circuit boards, we had to get out of Texas to keep it working, but I don't have a number off the top of my head of what we spent.
Can you get one for us, please?
Sure.
By year for the last five, as well as specs on the model number? Because we're kind of stating that this is kind of beyond its useful life. Thank you.
And I wonder if I could ask board members if we could get Tom to go through all of it, and then save our questions for that, it might make more efficient use of our time. So Tom, continue.
Okay. All right, next project is the artificial turf field at Ward High School, as you probably recall, we did Fairfield Ludlow High Schools this past year, and Ward High Schools, we were hoping to wait another two years, but it's failing too quickly. We had a GMEX test done on it, and they thought that we probably could squeak by this fall, season with football, but that would be about it. We've done some patching and repairing, but generally, it's just failing, these last about 10 to 12 years. Along with this project, we wanted redo the running track, which we did at Ludlow High School, we don't remove the whole track, but we resurface it, patch all of the cracks and the problem areas, and then recoat it and restripe it. One of the other things we want to do, in working with the athletic director, the long jump and pole vault play areas are in this field, and they're a little too close to the soccer lines, so we'd like to look at doing an ad alternate to see if we could relocate those to the end zones or other areas to get them out of the way of play. So we're going to try that as ad alternates, to see if we can afford to do that. We have good engineering firms on board that have looked at this field, and have done many in the state of Connecticut, we're confident we can get this replaced for the funds allotted. The next project is also at Ward High School, these are the Blake tennis courts, these are the tennis courts that are behind the Fitz house in the back of the school, these are, as you can see from the breakdown, they're original to 1996. In 2005, we did a recoding and patching of some of the major cracks, and that's when it was named James Blake, after James Blake, Blake tennis courts, but these are failing, the cracks are getting too large, the companies that have come out and looked at it want in excess of $67,000 to do a repair, and they'll only guarantee it for two years. So we feel it's time that we've got the use out of these tennis courts, and we should look to replace them. The other problem we have with the courts on this location, when they were installed, they weren't installed with expansion joints, you normally do expansion joints because of the long span of batuminus or concrete, so we're seeing more cracks than usual. We work with a couple of engineering firms, and we will bid this as a batuminus project, but we may do an ad alternate to do a new post-tensioning concrete system. It's a fairly new system, we haven't done any of them in Fairfield, but they are in Connecticut. There's some companies that are guaranteeing the post-tensioning concrete systems for 20 years, which would be a huge increase from the batuminus, which is 10 to 12 years. We need to go see a couple of the sites that have done this work, we were working in concert with Jerry Lombardo before he left, Anthony Calabrese was involved, it's something we may want to try with the heavy use of the tennis courts in our district. So we're going to do that as an ad alternate, and see if we can fund it at this location. Next project is at Thomason Middle School, this is a re-roof project, we got the life out of this roof, and then some, this expired in 2011, the warranty did, and with our good PM program, we were able to keep this roof pretty active and strong until now, it's starting to fail, as you can see from the photographs, we have a PM contract that has been up on that site several times, and is reporting to us that this could go at any minute and go quickly. The good news with this roof replacement is it will be reimbursed with the state of Connecticut, so with the approval of this, we'll need a building committee that will work with the town on, so that we can file it with the state and seek reimbursement on this roof replacement. There's an excellent drawing here that shows you the amount of roofs that are at Thomason Middle School, and which ones will be involved, it's on page 36. And we don't see any problems at all with this project moving forward. The last project in the booklet is a security infrastructure upgrade, as you may recall, we presented two years ago, a security infrastructure funding project, as we got through to the Board of Selectmen, we broke that into two pieces, two phases, because of the amount of work, and how much we were going to be able to get done in the summer. This is a third phase, it's a very small amount requesting, we're working with the Fairfield Police Department, and some of the requirements that we want to see finished at our schools, this came from practicing and experiencing lockdown situations, and some of the things that the police are witnessing as they're touring the schools and witnessing all of our practicing at the school sites. So that is a quick overview, quick and fast, I know the agenda's very full tonight.
Questions, Mrs. Gerber?
First of all, thanks very much for the booklet, it has a lot of really good information in it. So my first question is about the Ludlow parking lot, will this have any impact, or will it be impacted by the window replacement project that will be going on next summer?
No.
Just in terms of, you know, workmen coming in and out, I mean, I guess they'd just be all focused in the front of the building, they just wouldn't go around to the back, or?
Yeah, I mean, this paving job goes pretty quick, believe it or not.
Okay.
I mean, we did Ward High School in about six days.
Oh, okay.
So reclaiming it is a machine for the day, and then they check the base level, any drainage issues, and then they immediately start to put down new batuminus.
Okay, yeah, thank you, and then...
Can I interrupt just one more?
Sure.
Related to that, not so much timing, but I think Mrs. Gerber was also thinking of, will the construction traffic that maybe put more heavy use on that parking lot, if we do the paving, and then we do construction vehicles on top of that paving for the windows, do we need to coordinate that?
No, it shouldn't be an issue, matter of fact, when they put the first course down, they want it to sit and be driven on a while, so it will pack down before they put the second course, and once the second course is on, any traffic can drive on it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then with the projects at Ward, well, the AC and the turf, the AC, I'm assuming, since next summer Ludlow will have the wind replacement, that they wouldn't be able to have any summer programs, or summer school, or anything there, so then it would be at Ward? I just, yes, okay.
Yes.
So I guess would, you know, because you're talking about the big crane and everything like that, would that in any way impact the summer school program, or is something you just have to work around or plan around?
We'll work around it.
Again, I'm not sure how long it would take.
Yeah, the crane is about 14 days to set up on the sidewalk in front of the building, remove the old unit and place the new one, and then tear down the crane and get it away.
Okay.
But we can work around that, and the safety, we won't, certainly won't lift a piece of equipment over a building with any occupants.
Sure.
In there.
Okay, and then I guess, too, with the turf replacement, how does that impact with, you know, summer sports, and, you know, like captains' practices and things like that, would they all be over at Ludlow? Because I know when Ludlow had the replacement, I think they were over at Ward, so it would just go back the other way.
I think Seth Frye is here, if he wants to come up and answer any questions about the athletic program.
Sure. Sorry.
If you'd state your name.
Hi, I'm Seth Frye, I'm the Athletic Director at Fairfield Ward. First of all, there's no such thing as captain's practice in Connecticut.
Okay.
The CIEC has told us.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, we can't, in all seriousness, we can't support, you know, unsupervised activities, I know we don't, you know, lock everything up outside, so it's open to the public, and, you know, many students do come and use it, but it certainly can't be a primary concern of ours. I know Tom mentioned, you know, getting through this past season, the fall, with football, but it's really, it was a lot more than that, and even football, you know, people think, oh, there's only five home games, but with JV and varsity, you know, we had 15 home games, I think we played 18 field hockey games on the turf, and I think eight soccer games total, and it really is, you know, wearing out, the last couple of years, you know, really quickly, like actually wearing through holes into the turf where there's gravel, basically, and needing those repairs. And, you know, we're looking at the spring, and we've tried to limit the use of non-high school athletics, working with central office and reservations to keep it from getting too beat up, but in looking at the spring, you know, we have boys and girls across that are going to be on there quite a bit, you know, pretty hard on it, and, you know, again, I'm not sure what outside groups would be using it, but those are, you know, a couple of the concerns. As far as, you know, summer usage, you know, we, fortunate at Ward, we do have the grass fields that are, there's a lot there that's available, and we're working on getting those in good shape, so, you know, there's an alternative for the students to use and the public to use, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I guess, another question, Tom, in regards to the turf fields, and I had asked this before with Ludlow when it came up, is just the safety issue?
Yes.
And I know I've been told that there have been further studies shown that, you know, turf fields can be dangerous, you know, that the materials in them can be dangerous, that there's been more out there, I don't know if you've heard anything new or different, or could perhaps look into it, just to kind of see, because I think that's something that certainly is, you know, a cause of concern for parents.
We did look into that, and we expected those questions to come up, we met with Anthony Calabrese and Jerry Lombardo, we're still hearing from a lot of the schools putting in artificial turf fields, and from the consultants we're working with, and we're working with two large firms now that... the consultants we're working with, and we're working with two large firms now that they're still putting in the crumb rubber. The difference is they're now saying that they're making the crumb rubber green. The crumb rubber comes in white. They color it black for these artificial turf fields, but now they're coloring them green. They're saying that they're not getting as hot, and the field isn't getting as hot with the green color crumb rubber instead of the black. But as far as crumb rubber versus any other product, they're still recommending the crumb rubber as the safest product, and we're still seeing those installed at schools and universities in Connecticut.
Okay. And then the other question I had was about the Tomlinson roof. So you said it's eight roofs, which I guess from my count means that there may be seven other ones that aren't being?
Correct.
This time, so are those ones from the most recent renovation?
They would either be brand-new from the renovation addition Tyseu Kim did, or they were previous roofs done.
And so then these theoretically should last us through 2037?
Right, we're expecting a 20-year, no-dollar-limit warranty, but we are expecting to get an extra five years with, at least five years with our PM program that we're doing.
Okay. And then it does say here will reduce maintenance costs on the old roof, so how many old roofs are there of the remaining seven?
I will get you that information.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
And I wonder when we vote on this, one of the other people that we asked to verify an opinion was our Director of Health, you know, concerning the turf field. So I wonder if you could just ask the same question Mrs. Gerber asked, is there any new information? Because at the time, he recommended that we go with this, and so if you could just update that recommendation. Thank you.
I will.
Other questions on this, I'll look that way first. Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
I just had one, I did have one that was going to be directed toward Mr. Frye, so I didn't know if, before he left, I didn't know what Mr. Patton was.
Do you mind, go ahead. Mrs. Maxon Connolly first.
I just hope, because this was also a topic when we were talking about Ludlow's field, if you could, you made reference to reservations being denied as you're trying to preserve the field to finish out the school year. I was wondering if you could speak to, to the best of your knowledge, what is the community use of the Ward field?
Well, Tom might know more of the details on that. There's a lot of unofficial use on our field, and as I said, you know, we don't have the ability, you know, to like lock it down completely. The fences are four feet around anyway, so people will just jump over them. We've done our best, you know, to limit the, you know, unofficial use by, you know, locking up goals and things like that and keeping them from getting, you know, vandalized or overused or abused. But as far as the formal reservations, Tom would probably know more about that.
Yeah, we've tightened up the policy and administrative regs on the reservations, and we have knocked out a lot of groups that were non-Fairfield-related. Also, many of the groups, and Anthony can help me with this, but I know Park and Rec generally stays away from the two high school locations because they are so busy.
That's correct, yeah. We don't reserve them at all. They actually would go through reservations and through the ADs.
Well, I guess the point of my question is that as we're going to the other town bodies, I mean, part of our point with the Ludlow field was that it was very much a community-used field, and that I would, you know, for us to be able to speak to, how does, I mean, for example, I know, I see, I don't know if it's Pop Warner or Wildcat football that's being played on those fields, so never mind, you're freshmen, you're JV and you're varsity, there are, I'm interested in the Fairfield community use of that field, and is there any level of specificity that you can speak to that?
We can. We can pull even the reservations that are booked for that field. And you're correct, Wildcats is one of the heavier users of the school, of the high schools. And we can pull that when we go to the other town bodies. But in general, we've been trying to cut back on the reservation groups that are using the two high schools just because they are so busy. The new policy administrative regs require you to provide a reservation notification at least seven days before you need it. And the problem is they need to touch base with the athletic directors to see what's open and free, so that they can get their seven-day notice in. And a lot of the time, the athletic directors can't give them specific days that it's open because of how their games are running and if there's going to be a replay game, or if there's going to be another tournament game, or if they're going to win and continue on. So it has steered a lot of groups away from using them, but there are a few that are still booking reservations. We can pull those reservations and get a count and be prepared for other town bodies. But generally, our high schools get a lot of use, even by our own schools.
Okay. So I have other things, but I can?
Mr. Patton?
Just a quick question on the Ludlow parking lot. Is, I know we're using outside contractors, is this the same process that we use for the town roads? Because I know we use, the town uses a slightly different process that's, you know, has more longevity and more durability than?
It is.
Than others, or is it?
It's very similar. It may not be identical, what they're doing on the town roads, but we're trying to reclaim the existing material, verify the bases in good shape and compact it properly with a proper tonnage roller, and then doing a two-stage batuminus coating. So the first stage is like a two-and-a-half compressed to one, and then they wait for a while to get that packed down, and then they add the final top coat.
This is the same company or process that we use at Ward?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess my final question's a little more general as we get into budget season with these things, and I'm sure this is not the type of thing that everybody wants to hear, but if you had to take one of these projects out of the documents for non-recurring for this year, is there anyone that has more priority or less priority than another?
No way. I'm pushing for doing all of these. These are all very important. I wouldn't want to say publicly that I could cut one. I mean, these are all priority ones.
All right.
They're in the long-range facility plan, the waterfall schedule, so they're planned. If we, you know, push back on any of these, it's going to accumulate onto others that we need to propose in the next fiscal year.
So right now, those are on plan, because you said like the Ward field had to be moved up a bit because it was deteriorating faster than we thought.
Correct.
So I think that would possibly be more priority than the parking lot if we had to swap things around, which we tended to. So I'm just, you know, playing devil's advocate, knowing full well that we have, you know, hard budget season ahead and knowing full well with the state cuts and all that, that, you know, there might be a bit more pushback this year. All right, I'll say nothing more.
Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
Two questions regarding the security infrastructure, and please feel free to not answer. The first one, I think, should be easier. There was a question mark regarding any potential for grant money with that security. When would we know more about that?
I don't know what specific date we would, but we are watching the website constantly to make sure if the state is going to fund any grants for security for schools, we will certainly jump in and apply.
Okay, so at this point, there are none, but they've had them in the past, so you're checking?
Correct.
Okay. And then this is more the question that I'm not sure if you'd want to answer, but the reference to the external PA, I don't, I'm not quite clear on what role that serves. Again, when I think of lockdown, I think of everyone in the classrooms, et cetera, and that's a significant portion of that funding. And so I didn't know if you could speak to, how does that factor into that security infrastructure?
Yes.
Sure, I could just explain that. Lieutenant Eddie Wyatt with the Fairfield Police Department, I'm the commander of our school safety division. One of the common complaints we get from every site, pretty much, is that outside activities like recess and outdoor gym don't hear emergency announcements being made, and that's a huge deal.
I should have realized that. Thank you.
No problem.
And when we had the all-school, 17-school lockdown, that became quite evident.
Is that it? Any other questions from board members? You will have a chance to ask questions at the next meeting where we approve it. Ms. Carnell, followed by Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick.
Through the chair, Ms. Cullen. Fairfield Ludlow, the student parking lot, was that anticipated when the renovation was done? That there would be the possibility of damage done to the parking lot?
No, it wasn't anticipated, but we know it gets a lot of heavy use and from striping it each year so that the students can see their spots and numbers, filing the permit. Even the contractor for coming back to us saying, you can see the erosion even underneath the lettering we're putting in, that it seemed better days. So we've been watching them. We drive around to all the schools. We don't get enough funding, really, to go to a school and do all the paving on the site. As you've probably seen, if you've driven around to the schools, we try and get to five or six schools and do a large area with our Board of operating budget money. And when we have a large one like this pop up, it needs to go into under non-recurring. We couldn't even do this in pieces. The only thing that was done on this site was the handicap spots up close to the new cafeteria, so that will remain. But generally, the rest of the whole parking lot is in very poor shape.
I'm a little confused, because the trucks and the heavy machinery was closest to the door. The parking lot is further down, with the stripes and repainting the spot.
Not true. No, respectfully, not true. I mean, they staged all of their equipment and storage material on the whole parking lot. Generally, it was a good spot for them to work from and drive around on. So it wasn't up close to the building only. I mean, they used the side of Webster Wing, and they used the whole back lot.
So is the painting of the spots because of the trucks and all the equipment that was on there, or they're really two different things and we're just grouping them together?
No, it's two different things. We have to stripe the parking lot so that the children can see their spot and their number.
They'll take them anyway, don't worry.
You know, they wear away, and especially when the paving is falling apart and crumbling, those numbers and lines don't even last a year. We have to go in and do that each year, so.
Just one question, because it says here the lot is at least 12 years old. What's the average life of a parking lot that where things start to really go downhill?
I don't have that information, but I can get that for you.
Just in general, there's no kind of like, oh, we get to this point, you know, like with the roof? You know, you get to a certain point, and you know you're going to need to replace the roof. Is it the same with a parking lot?
It is similar, but we're not following it that closely because we haven't been funded properly.
Right, so theoretically, though, if, in a perfect world, how frequently would you replace parking lots, I guess is my question.
I can get that for you.
Okay.
Ms. Carnell?
I guess back to the security infrastructure projects, which is obviously most needed. I'm just curious about the PA external system, and it makes sense for the need for that, but that seems like an extremely huge amount for, I believe it would be 17 systems with speakers, or are they going to be around, all around the school?
Yeah, I think if Lieutenant Wyatt wants to answer, but I would say they're going to be around the school, because we don't know where all the children will be. A lot of our elementary schools use paved play areas, playgrounds, fields.
Yeah, and when you take a look at the diversity of some of the sites, some of the buildings are really big, so you're talking about a lot of external speakers. And when you multiply that over 17 sites, it really does add up.
I thought it was just the wire, hard-wired. Okay, now we get to my favorite of all. Let's talk about that turf. How much was the Ludlow turf?
The funding request was $650,000 to do Fairfield Ludlow High School, and that was too tight.
I'm sorry, what?
That was too tight. There wasn't enough money.
$650,000 was not enough money?
Right. When we hired the consultant and bid it out, if we didn't accept a $50,000 credit to reuse the crumb rubber, we would have been over budget. So essentially, a contractor put an ad alternate, an alternate deduct in to vacuum up all the existing crumb rubber, store it into bags, and then reuse it. If we didn't accept that $50,000 credit, we would have been over the $650,000. And we found out later that that probably wasn't a good idea. The crumb rubber itself does break down, gets smaller, and the crumbs get smaller, and it doesn't actively work as well as new crumb rubber.
Two questions. We'll go to Ludlow for a second. Was, I think I read was out Ludlow that there was an incident from one of the sports where a piece of it got ripped up and we're under insurance or something?
That.
It was the middle school?
Middle school.
Okay. Okay. So let's go, I knew you would know the answer. So to the turf, are we bidding it out to the same company that put down?
No, it'll go through the purchasing department. We have a consultant on board, an engineer to work with us, and it'll go out publicly. It'll be bid publicly.
Is there a reason they wouldn't go back if they were happy with the work that was done at Ludlow?
Technically, we weren't 100% happy with that firm. Ludlow was bid differently than the way we want them moving forward. Ludlow was bid as a whole project, so a contractor put in a loan number and then went out and picked his own field company, his own running track company, and then someone else to do the equipment and the goalpost. In talking with new engineers and new consultants and working with Park and Rec, there's a better way to bid that, so that you get the companies you want that do fields and running tracks, and then the contractors picked to run the job.
So even though we're taking a different route this time to do this, you still feel that $750,000, isn't too expensive to do this?
No. No, and we want to try and see if we can't move the long jump and the pole vault jump to the end zones instead of the sides. They're a little too close to the soccer lines.
So that would be included?
Yes.
At the $750?
Yes.
Right.
But that will be, sorry, but that will be added as an ad alternate?
Correct, because if we don't?
So it may not be accomplished, depending on the budget impact. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. If we bid it with it in there and the numbers come over, we can't do the job without going back to all the town bodies because the number's over. If we bid the artificial turf field, the running track, the things we definitely need, and do ad alternates, we can pick and choose and see how much we can get done for the whole job.
So, excuse me, then it wouldn't have to come back to the town?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs., I think Mrs. Lou McCormick was next, and then I'll go to Tricia Pitco. Mrs. Pitco?
So I think maybe you kind of answered my question already, but I just wanted to make sure. It seems that with many of our infrastructure projects, we keep running over, and we keep running over not by an insignificant amount. So my question is, is this 2785 that you're asking for, is this pretty certain, or is this 2785 really to be marked for four to five million?
Well, I would like to respectfully correct you. I'm in my 15th year here, and 14 years, we've come under budget on all non-recurring requests.
So that's, I wanted to make sure. So on the non-recurring, the numbers you think are pretty dead-on, and there's little chance of going over?
Little to no chance of going over.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be fair to say, of the total projects, there may be one project that's a little bit over, another project that's a little bit under, but you're talking about the total projects?
The total funding request and bonding request will come under.
Ms. Pitco, were you finished? Ms. Pitco?
I don't know if my question is to Lieutenant or Mr. Cullen. It's to the emergency first aid kits. Is this the actual kit on page 46?
Yeah, I think that covers?
This disaster preparedness supplies?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to be in every classroom in our schools?
Correct.
Are we going to be required to provide first aid training for our teachers? Because if you look at some of the items that are in this kit, I mean, there's a multi-tool, there's some chemicals, there's a headlamp, some first aid supplies. I mean, I imagine we're not just going to put the kit in the room and not talk about what's in it?
Correct.
Okay. The reason why I ask that is because that amount to train all those teachers isn't in here, so I, I'm just curious how this would roll out.
It definitely will be something we'll work with the police on, and as they're doing their training in the schools with the teachers. I don't think it's anything extensive. We don't need an hour with each teacher to go over the kit. We did the porta potty kits in all the schools. They're pretty self-explanatory. But we found that during lockdowns, we could have used a small first aid kit for some of the issues that had popped up.
Anything else? And again, trying to keep the meeting on schedule, Mr. Llewellyn, is that the last board member that has a question or comment? Mr. Llewellyn?
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Cullen, thank you very much. A couple of quick questions for you here.
for you here. I'm going to inverse. I'm going to flip Mark's question. Which is the most important project? The most critical that has to be done?
Well, it's.
You can't say none or all.
I say they all are. I mean, when I look at.
So, the roof's going to fall in on the tennis court? One of these has to be critical to the kid's education.
When I look at all the projects for the district, the list is so long, I have to break it into priority ones, twos, and threes. And the ones generally make it on the operating budget or the nonrecurring request. So, these are all number-one priorities. There are number twos and threes that aren't on here.
So, you're unable to prioritize a roof over a parking lot?
I wouldn't want to publicly tell you that one of these is not important.
Okay. So, I guess, when can we expect, or can we expect prior to the next meeting, the updated waterfall that is going to reflect all of the changes that are going on in town? I guess there was a discussion on the waterfall last week. And, you know, I'm hearing that Holland Hill is way over budget, like two times what was initially projected. You know, so that's pretty close. We went from 10 to 13 to, what are we up to? 22? 21 plus one?
21.
Plus one?
No, 21.
Oh, I don't know. Is that million-two included in the 21?
So, we'll talk about the Holland Hill when I get to liaison reports. Let's stay focused on the nonrecurring.
Oh, I just thought that was a capital project, too. I'm sorry. Okay. State reimbursement, what have we actually been collecting? I hear that the Board of Selectmen is saying that the numbers, or the Board of Finance, excuse me, saying that the numbers are slightly lower than the 26, 27%.
Right now, it's running somewhere around 25.67%. However, on roofs, I don't think we'll get that full amount. Roofs and windows, the state looks at it a little bit differently. We've been seeing anywhere from 18 to 21% reimbursement on those.
So, 18 to 21. And is there reimbursement on parking lots?
No.
Turf fields?
No.
No. Okay. So, back to the other question about the waterfall. When can we expect that?
I wouldn't update the waterfall just because of the Holland Hill project.
No?
One, the Board of Ed number we're using is still standing strong. What the Building Committee is doing with the town and with the current project team, architects and engineers, they'll be going through some value engineering and several meetings to try and bring that number down.
And what is the number that's going strong?
Our number is 13,240,000.
13,240.
And was a request put into the Board of Selectmen, or was that just?
No, no request. Again, staying on nonrecurring, because then you're going to steal all my thunder for reporting on the Holland Hill project.
I'm okay with that.
But I'm not. But I'm not. So, let's stay on the nonrecurring. But to answer your specific question, the budget is 13,240, which is an all-in budget.
Okay. And then, these projects that you talk about it a different method. One was when you did the Ludlow field with 650, general contractor responsible for picking people and staying within budget. How, this is different how? You're going to have a engineering firm or a project management firm?
Nope. We had an engineering firm with the other way. We just learned some new information in calling more people out to the site when we started looking at wards and said, there's another way to do this.
What is the other way? I'm sorry.
The other way is to bid the field and the running track project, and those companies hire a contractor that work with them to supervise and run the job versus the reverse. So, with Fairfield Ludlow High School, we had a firm out of Massachusetts that was awarded the bid. They have a small office in Connecticut, but they're based out of Massachusetts. And they reached out to all the field companies and running track companies and put together their own team. And it bumped out some companies we like that we would like to see get some of the work because their numbers weren't low. So, if we do it the reverse way, we can get the field companies we like, be more aggressive, and then they pick a contractor on the side that coordinates it all.
And it's going to cost us $100,000 more either that way?
No, I don't think, that's not the reason it's 750,000. It's 750,000 because I explained earlier, when we did Ludlow High School's bid, if we didn't accept the deduct alternate to vacuum up all the crumb rubber, we would have had $50,000 more in funding, and it would have been over the 650,000.
But you were able to get it done for 650,000. I guess that's the key point. So, there is some advantage to having a budget and sticking with it as opposed to going out and grabbing and being able to choose some of the individuals. Are you displeased with the outcome of it or just the process?
I'm not displeased.
Field subpar?
I'm not displeased with the outcome, but the punch list and the final spring work was very difficult to get completed.
And we didn't pay until it was completed?
Yes.
Okay. That's the ultimate, I guess. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on, a follow-on to Mr. Llewellyn?
Okay. But I'll make this the last question because we do have other agenda items, and this is not up for a vote. And any board members who have questions that occur to them, feel free to get to Dr. Jones directly between now and the next board meeting. And then we'll also have time for discussion at the next board meeting. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So, if we had charged an extra $100,000, would we have been satisfied with the Ludlow turf field? Because this is costing us $100,000 more.
It's also supposed to be on the Ward High School site. As I said, the pole vault and the long jump is much closer to the soccer lines than at the Ludlow site.
So, what is that costing us? $100,000?
That's in here. Yep. That number's in the booklet.
But I mean, it just seems like a lot of money to move to a pole vault.
Look at pages 16 and 17. I gave you a breakdown. The pole vault and long jump are running around 92,800, we're expecting.
And you think that for the balance of it, that the product will be superior? Is that what you're saying?
Superior than Ludlow High School?
Yeah.
Yes, because we're not reusing the crumb rubber. We're going to go with a green crumb rubber versus the black. It'll be a little bit cooler for play. And we're hoping to get these two items moved out of the area of play.
And the $100,000 is to move the long jump and the pole vault?
The number projected. Once we bid it, we're going to see different numbers, but.
But you are pretty certain that these, it would come under at least, right?
Yes.
It just seems like a big number to move two items. So, you know, I'm just thinking that we should be getting something much better or something different. But again, you're certain that we're not going to come in over and have everything?
No.
And again, I remind board members that it's the collection of all of the nonrecurring projects that will be bonded. And there may be pluses and minuses of individual projects. But our experience over the last 15 years is that the nonrecurring projects come in on budget. It's the larger building projects that sometimes building committees struggle with. So, let me move on to item 7B. So, thank you. But Mr. Cullen, you're still up. So, the recommended motion on the radon testing is that the Board of Education approve the district-wide radon five-year reevaluation testing per State of Connecticut Department of Public Health requirements. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Pitco? This is a required test?
Yes.
Correct. So.
Radon reevaluation. So.
So, let me see if board members have any questions, because if they don't, then we can just quickly approve a required test by the State of Connecticut and move on. Any questions from board members on this required radon test? None? Anything that you think is 30 seconds worth of critical information we should know?
No. It's just a requirement we're meeting for the State of Connecticut. We start in 2002, 2007, 2012. It's every five years.
Thank you. This is a.
I do have one question. Is it in the budget already? And what's the amount?
Mr. Cullen?
The budget is the hiring of the consultant, which is about $6,700.
Is it in this year's current budget?
Yes.
Fine. Thank you.
This is a voting item. So, any member of the public that wishes to come forward and comment on the radon testing that is a required test by the State of Connecticut, please come forward.
I had a quick question.
I'm sorry. I've asked for the public to come forward. Let me finish that, and then I'll go back to the board for final questions.
We did, actually.
I'm waiting because I have patience. Nobody's coming forward. Okay. Back to the board. Mr. Patton?
Through to Chairman, Mr. Cullen. Have we had since 2002, any issues with radon at any of the schools that the testing's found?
Yes. We have three schools that have mitigation systems.
And those are just ongoing? And I know those aren't complex systems, so.
Right.
They're not really tough if they break down?
Yeah. It's just a ventilation fan that's running 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
Okay. Do you know what schools those are?
Yeah. Thomason Middle School, Riverfield, and Stratfield.
Concerning two new schools. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, the recommended motion that's before us is that the Board of Education approve the district-wide radon five-year reevaluation testing per State of Connecticut Department of Public Health requirements. Please, all in favor, raise your hand. It's, all in favor of the radon testing, raise your hand. It's unanimous, 9-0. Thank you very much.
Acquired.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have the next business item is the recommended motion concerning the re-roof project. To accept it is that the Board of Education accept the Fairfield Ward High School re-roof project, TMP 051, 0123RR, as complete. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Liaison.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli is moving it. Do I have a second?
I was just curious.
Mrs. Gerber, I believe Mr. Llewellyn was the liaison. Correct. It's not the most complicated project that ever existed, but nonetheless.
Someone I got on the committee, so.
Yes. We have the memo that is, was provided to the board, which we appreciate from the chairman of the Roof Building Committee. Do you have any thing that you need to tell us beyond the memo?
Really, this project has been ongoing a lot longer than five years. The impetus to replace it started when the high school was being renovated in like 2004, '04, '05. And we basically delayed, tested the roof to make sure we can extract enough life to less us through, in order to get the state reimbursement. And there was another interesting fact about this, is this roof was not eligible for reimbursement, and a special law was passed. And so, our state team worked to pass a special law for that roof so we would get reimbursement. I thought it was unique.
As a reminder on that question, when we went out to do this roof, the pitch requirements for roofs was different. They had increased it. So, we got special legislation to say, no, the pitch that we used to have to do is sufficient. Interestingly enough, the state then recognized the error of their ways and passed legislation so that they're back to the original specs so that we paved, re-roofed new territory. Anyways, any questions from the board members on accepting the roof project? Any questions from the board members on accepting, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Just one brief follow-up. The 26.76% rate of reimbursement, is that actually, I mean, I don't know if this is expected because it had previously been a higher number. So, is this just because it's grandfathered?
Hi, Sal Morbido, Manager of Construction. The 26% number comes from the state, and it was at the time that they approved it in 2012, that was our reimbursement rate for that year. It can change each and every year depending on changes to the angelic rate for the state, which is made up of various components. It's a math problem, and it comes out to a percentage point. And it's based on tax base, wealth of the town, and things like that.
But once the project is accepted by the state, we get that reimbursement rate, even if they change it on future projects in other years?
We could take, as in this case, five years. We're locked at that rate that they gave us in 2012.
Any other questions, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli? Any other questions on the part of the board? I would remind the board that, of the item that's in here that says this was funded 11 million and costs 7.2, we essentially saved about $3.5, $4 million on this project. A large part of it is due to the pitch issue and the help of our legislature. Out to the public, is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on the Board of Education accepting the roof project on Ward High School? Seeing nobody come forward. The motion in front of us is that the Board of Education accept the Fairfield Ward High School re-roof project. I won't read the number again as complete. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. On to item D, approval of the CSDE authorized signature change. On the back of your agenda is the recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the signature change form for the Bureau of Health, Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli. Anybody here to speak to it, or is this just an administrative thing and we should just approve it? Please state your name.
I'm just.
Oh, you're getting ready for the next, the next show. Any questions from board members that need responses? Having none, this is a voting item. So, out to the public. If anybody has a question about a signature change form that needs to be signed, please come forward. I don't know what direction she, okay, she just, okay. So, back to the board. The recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the signature change form for the Bureau of Health, Nutrition, Family Services, and Adult Education as enclosed. Please raise your hand in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Look at this. I just was showing our superintendent that I was assuming that we would get to the first reading of policies at 9:40. So, we're doing very well. I thank the board for that. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, first reading of policies.
Okay. First, please note that the policies are stapled together. So, the very last page is a separate one. The pages that precede it are the 3520. And this is definitely one, especially on the first policy, that I'm not going to belabor it now, but I would appreciate questions in advance because this is a policy we actually did take a few meetings on. And there's a lot of definitions in here with accompanying examples that will help it to make more sense. But if I get the questions in advance, that I can be ready for that as well as Mr. Coyne, who I know would love to join us on this one. So, as always, if I could just have the questions in advance, I would appreciate it unless there are any questions right now.
Questions from the board on the first reading of these two policies, which will be on the agenda for the first meeting in January. Seeing no hands raised. Please do get to the chair in advance so that the chair can be ready. Thank you. Status update on the Walter Fitzgerald campus. So, please come forward and introduce yourself just for the viewing public.
Good evening. Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education and Pupil Services.
And I'm Gail Donowitz. I'm the principal of the Walter Fitzgerald campus and special ed coordinator.
And can I presume that you have a PowerPoint that we should again vacate?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
So, good evening. If you recall, a few months ago now, you had asked that we come to you and update you on improvement efforts at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. So, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Donowitz to discuss what's happening. And at the end of the presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Firstly, I want to thank those of you who have come and visited. That's much appreciated. So, the, we can continue. So, the presentation. So, the presentation is actually a combination of information and some data, just in terms of updates. The fundamental elements of the Walter Fitzgerald model, I think we're at a perfect time, which our presentation went back-to-back with the last PowerPoint that you all saw this evening, because our school is very much about relationships. We, we see the students from the Fairfield Public Schools, high schools, coming to us because they need an alternative. And in fact, the alternative at its base is about relationships. So we do a lot in terms of pro-social teaching. You'll see some of that data this evening. Positive and authentic relationships are paramount to what it is that we do. And so throughout the school day, we've actually incorporated some of the things that are going on at our high schools with an alternative flair, if you will, in that our block scheduling for academics is very much on the same, at the same caliber and at the same timing as the academic classes are at the high schools. By same timing, I mean the amount of time that is spent in an academic class is the 84 minutes or 85 minutes that we have at our, our regular high schools. What we've also done is we've built into our schedule, it's a little complicated, but our kids are actually quite comfortable with it, and our staff is as well. We've built in some community service learning. So, last year, for the first time, we've worked with our elementary schools, and this year, we're working with one of our middle schools to give our students the experience of being leaders in the elementary schools. This year, for the students who were in elementary schools and requested it, they are in the middle school. And one of the staff who's here this evening, Nora Lennon Bradley, our school social worker supervises that, along with our student support teacher, who actually teaches a humanities class alongside that. We feel that that's an important piece, that is, that authentic learning, and by being a part of the Fairfield Public Schools community, they're able to go in and see themselves as leaders. And for some of the students, they didn't experience prior learning environments positively, and this is an experience that actually builds that, builds that sense of learner. That's very important. We have had several of our students go on to post-secondary institutions, and that sense of strength in the learning environment is also quite important for all of our students. Our instructional model is based on something called project-based learning. Project-based learning is a model that prepares students not only for life and inquiry and all of the 21st century skills that you've heard about, that is, about creativity, inquiry, higher-level learning and thinking, but it also is preparing them for something that I believe we're talking about in our high schools at this point in time in our capstone projects. So those, that sense of direction, that sense of investment, that sense of depth. Today, we had some presentations from our English classes. That is happening in all of our content classes. And I want to back up and just give you a little perspective, that each of the teachers at the Walter Fitzgerald campus is actually a department unto him or herself. So what that means is that our English teacher is in fact the English department at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, and works at the project-based learning for all the different levels of English, and so on and so forth. Our Student Support Center is another fundamental piece of our program. We allow for students to learn pro-social skills in a positive way. We use something called PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and that is a framework that allows for students to get feedback. We have an advisory built into each day, so students are getting feedback at the end of each day and making a plan for the following day. They have an opportunity to refocus with our student support teacher and go back into their classes to continue their academic learning. One of the things that's important to note is that engagement in learning isn't something that many of our students, or is something that many of our students have struggled with, and we're building that day by day and moment by moment. So really seeing that, seeing themselves as learners, as well as seeing the curriculum as something that they love to engage in. So some of the options of community service learning, we also are using the Play-Doh system for online learning and credit recovery, and the clinical supports in our school, our school social worker, our school psychologist, our special educators, and we also have Effective School Solutions like the other two high schools. That has actually helped to bring some students back to district, as well as to maintain some students within our high school division here in Fairfield. One of the things that was asked was to see a school organization chart, and here you are. Okay. Areas for focus and continued growth for this school year, thought it would be important for you to see, and that was stressed in our earlier presentation this evening on social-emotional learning. That is, we use the PBIS system. So last year, on a universal level, all of our students have point cards every day. All of our students get feedback from teachers each block of the day. We work on integrity, respect, and responsibility as the pillars of what is important at the school. So students are getting points, earning points, understanding what it is to move through their community with respect, responsibility, and integrity. This year, tier two and three, going to a group level and going to a more individualized level, we've concretized that. You'll see that a little bit later, just in a concrete form. We have Friday-level lunches for students who are on levels. They actually can work towards that incentive, so there's specialized lunch on Fridays. Our lunchtime is one of the times that the students get to be social during the day. Daily advisory, I mentioned, our restorative practices are about building relationship. Again, intentionally, we use a circles curriculum. School-wide Positive Behavior Support Committee, this year, we've actually brought in parents and students. And if it wasn't so late in the evening, I actually would have invited some of them, but quite honestly, it's working quite well to get some feedback from our parents and getting our parent population, our parent community involved in the school, as well as our students with our staff. We have a new student orientation. Every student who came into the school this year went through a full orientation with their family before beginning the school year, and we accept students on a quarterly basis. So every quarter, we actually have new students coming into the school, and we offer an orientation for those students. We actually go through it for each and every one of them. Every month, we have curricular field trips. So one of the pieces of project-based learning is authenticity. So our, I'm sorry that Eddie left. We actually worked with our police department for our forensics class. We were out in the field, problem-solving, and actually doing some onsite, onsite learning for the forensics class. We're visiting post-secondary study options, so not only about the, the regular community college and four-year universities, but we're also inviting students to look at some of their special areas of interest and bringing them to those. In terms of academic rigor, we're looking at engagement, project-based learning in all curriculum areas. I think I mentioned some of this. Professional learning team meetings, so our staff, our teachers actually meet once a week to go over the cross-curricular planning that is taking place, which is quite, thank you, which is quite challenging. Every teacher has a prep time for collaboration, and when you teach three, four, or five preps, you actually need that time for collaboration with others. In addition, for our special education students, we want to ensure that all of the modifications and accommodations are present. We have been working with the district curriculum leaders, so while we're looking at a different instructional model, that is, project-based learning, we're also looking at the pillars of academics in our district. So we're making sure that we meet the academic expectations within what it is that we're doing for project-based learning. And I do want to mention that we got Chromebooks this year at the school, so I want to thank folks for that. That's been real helpful in terms of what we're doing with Google Classroom. Some of the information that was asked was for the enrollment, and this is, these are the numbers for enrollment for this school year. As I said before, our students come on a quarterly basis, and then there are the exceptions. We are an alternative high school, and so every now and again, a student needs to come to our school for any number of reasons, and it doesn't work to wait until the end of the marking period or the beginning of the next marking period. And so we work very closely with our colleagues at each of the high schools. So students do come in off, off those times, but we really do prefer at the beginning of each marking period. So this school year so far, we have 34 students. 21 of those students actually were in our school last year, 10 from Fairfield Ward High School, and 11 from Fairfield Ludlow High School. Of that new enrollment, there are 13 students. One student came from an out-of-district placement and returned to district at our school. Out-of-district placements, there have been two this school year. There were nine students in the Effective School Solutions, the ESS program, and two of those, the two students that actually left the school were in the ESS program, but they needed more clinical support. This is a quote by a, by a man who actually wrote a famous book on parent and child, and is a psychologist, and kind of represents the reflective process that our teachers go through every day. Our students do bring some unique challenges, and I'm going to read this, I just think it's a very powerful quote. "I have come to the frightening conclusion that I am the decisive element in the classroom. It is my personal approach that creates the climate. It is my daily mood that makes the weather. As a teacher, I possess the tremendous power to make a child's life miserable or joyous. I can be a tool of torture or an instrument of inspiration. I can humiliate or humor, hurt or heal. In all situations, it is my response that decides whether a crisis will be escalated or de-escalated, and a child humanized or dehumanized." And as we go to look at some of the data, I want to just say that our teachers do a great deal of work with themselves and with the students, so that they recognize just how powerful our presence is at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. Thanks. I'm not going to read everything here that goes through school culture and our school climate. All day long, we have relationships. The IR squared is actually integrity, respect, and responsibility, those pillars that we're teaching in classrooms. The support center actually supports the students in being successful with those. Also, the success generalizes to their work in the field. Their success also generalizes, we have had students return to the high school to take a course of interest, and one of our students this school year actually decided she'd done very, very well with us, was going to be graduating actually early, and came to me in August and said, you know, I think I really want that senior experience here in Fairfield, and went back to Fairfield Ward High School. So, we've got some, we've got some nice fluidity for our students, and the skills that they, that they learn, we know are important for them to be future learners, and she's going on to university. Clinical services, I mentioned, so I'm going to just keep ongoing. This is actually a good, a good replica of, or a good representation of school climate and school culture, and we talk about them, but they're actually two different things, but we, and we look at the school culture, that is, the values and the expectations in the outer circle. Those are the practices of PBIS, of our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and the inner circle is actually some of that reflective and restorative practice that I'm talking about, that we use throughout the school day to build relationship. This is actually the format for a PBIS triangle, and I am not going to read you every one of these items, but if there is anything of question, certainly feel free to ask. The basic, the basic paradigm is that all students receive what's in the bottom, in the bottom tier, in tier one. Some students who need more support but are in small groups need tier two, and those students who need individualized, more intensive support are at tier three. And tier three is in the upper right, because it didn't fit into the triangle when I was doing that. The support for the system is in the upper left, and some of the things that have been talked about before, we use this to actually gather our data in terms of student performance. And again, I'm certainly willing to come back also and talk to you about any of these. So student performance is actually shown in two different ways. This year, for the first year, we actually have student levels. So student can earn to be on a Level A, B, or C, and Level C actually, and the graph is indicating, this is just something we use internally for progress monitoring, but the graph, the graph is indicating student movement between the levels, because each week, a student moves between the levels depending upon how the week has gone for them. Every student wants to be on Level A, and we want them to be on Level A, but some students are on Level C, which means that they give their cellphones up at the beginning of the day. I did say that. And, and Level B, they get their cellphones at a break, and Level A means that they've got their cellphones all day long. And we see that the cellphone is a distraction, or it's a motivation. What you see in the right-hand column, MP1 and MP2, we actually raised the percentages that students need to earn with their points from the first marking period, which we wanted to actually give them some encouragement, and we raised the standard by marking period two, and then probably for marking period three, depending on how the data goes. Okay. You'll see it separately, and I'm just comparing, pardon? No, no. You see it separately here, just looking at the difference between levels and actual points. So these are the number of points that they're earning on average per week, and we see what was happening semester one in 2015, and we're looking at so far what has happened as of 12, it should say 12 to 2016, sorry about that. But we can see the difference in the way in which we're moving over the semester. So we want to see that the students that are in 65 and below are moving up. We're happy to see that the students that are in the 80 to 89 and 90 to 100 are actually higher this school year. This is actually a, a look at the new students who have come to Walter Fitzgerald campus during this school year for the first time. And what we did was we looked at their academic achievement last year at this time, and this year at this time, in terms of the number of courses that they're, that they're actually passing from marking period one. There is, there is some difference here in that there are a few students for whom we do not have academic work. We actually have one student at the school who has no academic background, was homeschooled, and so we actually didn't have that information, and another student for whom, in H, has only been with us for a few weeks. So we have those blanks there for students who haven't been with us for the full marking period. Okay? So, I'm not sure if you're interested, or if these are links that you would like to see at some other time, but I do want to show you what it looks like. We have one of the webpages from our science teacher from last school year, and the lower one. And this is actually going to let you see, or give you a picture of what project-based learning looks like at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. It is on our website as well. But it seems not to be showing up for you. Andrea can see it.
I don't, I don't know why it's not showing up.
Okay. So what, what, what it would show you, and actually, it's on our website, so if any of you have a computer right there, it's on our website, but it actually will show you some of the different aspects of project-based learning at the Walter Fitzgerald campus. I don't know if the link above, if you can get that on your computer, because it's opening up here, it just doesn't seem, I'm sorry, it doesn't seem to be operating for.
It's just not showing on the projector.
Right.
You might have to hit escape. You might have to hit escape to get out of the.
To get out of the PowerPoint?
Correct.
Yeah.
It sounds. Well, let's just continue on. So drawn.
Okay, it's actually happening here, but it's not happening.
Hold down the alt key, hit the tab once and see if that works.
I'm a Mac person.
Hit the tab. Alt is right next to your spacebar. Now hold it down, and then hit tab. Nope, you're locked out.
Locked out. Okay. Now we have all sorts of things happening. Continue on.
Okay, well, I can continue. So one of the things that was discussed at the board meeting, that's the whole presentation over there. And you all have the links, I think you also received those, I can certainly by email. One of the things that was talked about last, at the end of last school year, was that we were going to invite some students from other districts. We have had some students coming back. We have had a few inquiries from other districts, but I don't, I don't know what else you'd like to say about that.
We have had a couple of inquiries to date. This year, none of those have panned out for an entry into the program, some for the district's reasons, some for our own reasons. As you know, we wanted to make sure that students who entered the program had a likelihood of success in the program. So we are still open to the five that you approved, but we're waiting for the right kids to come to, who we think will fit nicely into the model and who will be successful with us. So we will keep you updated as soon as we have students from other districts coming in. So in the presentation where you saw out-of-district, that means students we've sent out-of-district, or students who, who are Fairfield residents, who needed a higher level of service, and also students from out-of-district placements who returned to Fairfield, again, who are Fairfield residents. Fairfield residents. So, at this, at this time, there are no students attending the Walter Fitzgerald campus who are not Fairfield residents.
Could, could we just have the lights on? And if it's...
We're not using the PowerPoint. Reassemble and...
Let's turn that...
So, Andrea, to differentiate, you have out-of-district outbound and out-of-district inbound now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a new designation, but most certainly...
Because I was, I was just looking at that and saying, perfect.
Our inbound.
Outbound.
We have...
There you go.
Linga we use, so I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
Sometimes you just have to hit the projector twice.
So, not with the PowerPoint, but if there is, was there any wrap-up comment that you wanted to make before we go to the board for, for questions?
I appreciate the interest in our school.
Okay, thank you. And Andrea, any wrap-up comments that you wanted to make?
Certainly, I think historically, this is a program that began with two alternative high school programs in Fairfield, and we merged them about five or six years ago, and we have been housed at St. Emory's 108 Bayrow Street for about the past six or seven years. So, we leased that building. So, from a financial perspective, I think we put in the packet also some of the lease information, so that you have the financials on that lease. And that's also in the budget for next year, continuing that lease.
So, questions from the board? Ms. Pitko.
Do the students at Walter Fitzgerald take midterms or finals, or is it completely project-based learning, like an accumulative project or capstone?
We have a mixture of both, depending on the curriculum area. We've found that math especially needs to have the regular midterm, but it really depends on the curriculum area.
Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one quick question on the, actually, the agenda on St. Emory's. It seems to have gone up 12% in two years. Is there something behind that?
Archbishop.
Does it continue to increase too?
I would anticipate, if the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior, I would anticipate that we will see increases over time.
Okay, and has it been just the last two years it's been going up, or has it been for a while?
It had, it remained stagnant, or the same, for a very long time, and then with the new Archbishop, the diocese has made some decisions about how to use its real estate.
Right, perfect.
And so, it's gone up and escalated since then.
Okay, thank you.
And to follow up on that, as the board knows, there are two locations that we lease, one for maintenance and one for this project here, and it is an ongoing discussion at the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen level as to, well, we actually quote lease this space too, through a condo arrangement, as to when these leases come up, is this the best, most efficient location, or can we find another location in Fairfield? And with the vacancy rate being pretty low in Fairfield, it is not an easy fix, if you will, to, to go into a place where we own. Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
First, I'll apologize. My questions are written a little bit all over, so this will be a little disorganized. First, thank you for the presentation. Thank you again for hosting our visit to the campus. Really helps to give a picture to the space where this area is working. So, just a few questions. I was wondering, what is the typical duration of a student at the Walter Fitzgerald campus?
It's a great question, and there really isn't a typical. We have students who come in ninth grade and stay for their entire high school career, and we have other students who go back at any point in time, or come at any point in time. We have seniors who come, so it's all over. It really is, there's no typical.
And you speak to the orientation of welcoming the students. I was curious, what's the nature of the transition when they're going back to Warden Ludlow?
There is a lot of collaboration when they're going back to Warden Ludlow. We, first, they usually take just one course, and we work with the school counselor, we work with the school housemaster, we work with the support staff, depending on the individual student, and we work with the parents and the student. To do it gradually, to actually think about that gradually, the case that I just described of a young lady going back was simply because it was her senior year and she was doing wonderfully with us, and we worried nonetheless, you know, the amount of support and relationship.
Okay, and, and you referenced the parents. I was wondering, what typically is the level of parent, parental involvement at the school?
Let's just say we would encourage more.
Well, that's probably true of every PTA in the, in the district, so, fair point. I was wondering if you've encountered issues of, and I speak for the district where I work, and we're having a heck of a time with our alternative high school, and it's coming from a resistance of students who absolutely fit the services that the alternative high school offer, but they're resistant to go, not seeing how they, are you encountering that on, on any kind of level, or, or how does it work?
Minimal, minimal.
I guess I'm asking, at Warden Ludlow, how do they work to help students see what this is going to be for them, what this is going to represent for them?
I think that the social workers and the school psychologists and the school counselors actually know our program. They've been at the school and can speak to it. We give tours to students and to families to dispel any myths and actually invite, invite them to be engaged with the school. I want to say that some of the collaboration that happens from staff to staff, we have staff at the Walter Fitzgerald campus, especially our school social worker and school psychologists that work a lot with the staff over at the high schools and with families, so there's a lot of informal conversation that happens. So, it's not that a student comes to a meeting and is told, but rather, a decision is made on a gradual basis and guidance through that. So, it's really a process. I, I go to house meetings and staffings and, so that we can, we can have a tapestry rather than a break between one and the other, so the relationship continues this school year. The school counselors come over once a month, so the relationships are really key to continuing. So, the students actually know they're getting a Ludlow High School diploma, a Fairfield Ward High School diploma, and their relationship to the school is something that we work on continuing.
I would also suggest that with the renaming of the school to the Walter Fitzgerald campus and the implementation of their school improvement plan, there's been a lot of work done in rebranding, for lack of a better word, what it means to attend the alternative high school. I think the, some of the work with the project-based learning, the, the raising of the academic standards, the work in-service learning with kids going out into the community, there's a lot of work that remains to be done with that, but it's a constant thinking about who, who we are as a school, who we are becoming as students and learners, and how can we portray that out to the community that tends to dispel some of the old myths about alternative high schools. And that, and so, we're always working on dispelling those old myths about who goes to an alternative high school.
Perfect segue. First of all, I think rebranding is a perfect word, and I mean, I think it's essential for the success of a school that happened, but I was wondering if you could reference, because obviously, there is, the, the history of the alternative high school goes far back beyond these two years, and so much of this is the work of bringing in a full-time administrator and the commitment, you know, before that to really turn things around. And while there might not be data for it, I was wondering if you could anecdotally describe what was the experience perhaps compared to now? I just, just to give a sense of, you know, characterize the nature of the investment that Fairfield has made in this alternative high school.
As I said, Fairfield has had a long history of having alternative programs at the high school level. I can speak back 20 years. That's where, how far I can go back. We had two programs, one called Learning Co-op, and one called the Program for Alternative Learning, or PAL. They were programs that tended to be, tended to be, they were both alternative programs, one for typically developing students, one for students with disabilities, and they were housed in extra space, I would say. One was housed for a long time in a, in a small group of classrooms over by the auto shop at what was Fairfield High School at the time. The classrooms are now where the Early Childhood Center is, so that area of the building. The Program for Alternative Learning, or PAL, was actually 20 years ago housed with Central Office in what is now Osborne Hill School. But as the district grew, those two programs got squeezed out. And as they got squeezed out, they were moved and shuffled to different places, church basements. PAL was in a group of portable classrooms that are now behind Oldfield School. They moved, they were on the campus of Ludlow Middle School, what is now Ludlow Middle School, when that was Fields and Woods, and then moved to the back of Oldfield School. And then ultimately, St. Emory's was found, and we have been housed together, both programs. We started both programs with one program on one floor and one on the next, and then came to the conclusion that consolidating the two programs, merging the staff, and then creating a Walter Fitzgerald campus as a, as a unique and new experience was the way to go. And Gail has been working with the faculty there now for three, two years?
Well, this is my fifth year here, but, but in this second year.
Second year as the administrator at Walter Fitzgerald, and that is when we, I think we really had an identity as a school, and then began with the school improvement planning and the work that you see here is in its early implementation phase, I think.
And that's it, and I will echo your disappointment. I wish parents could have been here to speak to it as well. That would have been nice, you know, maybe at some point in the future, because I think that would be a true testament to your work is to, to hear from them, but thank you so much for the presentation.
I will say, we hear from students all the time, at students who graduate and come back. The relationships that are built there are quite special.
Then, I have to ask very quickly, is that part of the high school survey? Do they get a separate one, or would they be the results of those high school surveys? Or do they get grouped with Warden Ludlow, which would seem, well...
No, I, I think we're separate. I think we, I think we can be aggregated separate.
So, the survey of the last two years, two years, right?
Mm-hmm.
That it was done?
We've had one graduate survey, and I'm not sure, but I can find the answer to...
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's disaggregated that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members on the Walter Fitzgerald campus? So, we'll go around the circle here. Mrs. Gerber.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you again for hosting my visit last year. It was really very illuminating. I would highly recommend other board members do the same. One question, and I apologize if I asked this when I was over there. Extracurricular activities, how does that play? Are students able to, so they can participate in their homeschools, extracurricular activities, sports, plays, music?
Yep.
All of that. So, that's just something I think that's important for people to understand, that they do have those ties, even if they're at Walter Fitzgerald campus as a student during the day, that they still have those connections.
Yeah, and that's why that relationship between staff and students going fluidly is an important piece.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Your hand was up as well. Ms. Carnell.
Thank you for that. That was very well put together. I think now I know what goes on there, so. I just want to follow up on what Mrs. Gerber just said, in terms of them being involved at the school, where they came, come from, is that during the day or after, you know, at the end of the day activities? Because their day runs longer, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Their day is approximately the same, actually.
I thought it runs a little longer.
We ended 2:14. I think it's probably four, five minutes, yeah. But they do have the opportunity to go over. It's not, during the school day would be for coursework.
Okay.
And that depends on how the students are doing with us. We try to balance that out in terms of their diploma-bound expectations and goals, but most of the time, it's after the school day, and we encourage that, any interest that they have. In addition, if a student has a specific interest in, you know, in some particular area, culinary, for example, we will work with the student to be able to get them over there so they can actually take that course. The most important piece is that the students see themselves as part of the school community at Walter Fitzgerald campus and part of the larger community of their home high school, and they do.
Right, that is important to keep the connection. Do we provide transportation to get them to and from?
Yes.
Do they go 12 months a year to school?
No, they, they have the same calendar as the students at the other high schools.
Okay. You mentioned something about the Chromebooks. Why do you see that as an advantage? I agree with you, I'm just curious what you've noticed.
Because the sharing of information between teacher and student is actually fluid. Their ability to use, our teachers are now using Google Classroom, so there's a lot more, there's a lot more fluidity, there's a lot more use of the technology as part of their learning, rather than as a paste-on to their learning. That's why.
So, how did you get the funding? Because I, I think all the high schools should have the funding. I want to know what your secret is.
We're a pilot. We're so small.
All right.
We're not a pilot.
We'll figure out how to get a pilot going.
It actually was a, part of the replacement plan of the district. Walter Fitzgerald made a decision to go away from desktop computers when it was time for their computers to be...
To be, right.
And so, they, the decision was made, as it is in, in the schools, they make those decisions. When the desktops outlive their useful life and they need to be replaced, are they going to be replaced with a desktop or some other form? And Walter Fitzgerald campus, working with Nancy Burns, determined...
I think that's great. I think that's a much better decision.
We had actually written a proposal, and it corresponded with that time, yeah.
Who wrote it?
The rolling replacement plan of the district.
I'm going to ask for them to write it for us, so whoever, whoever wrote it, take credit on that. You talk, you talk about, in, on one of your bullets, you talk about relationships individually and collectively with the staff. Is there any more staff than what's in your chart? No. It's lonely at the top. All right, one second. Let's see. You, you know, this, the social worker, the school psychologist, the special ed, and the ESS, are those, how many does that make up altogether? And are they only for the Walter Fitzgerald campus?
The school social worker is for the Walter Fitzgerald campus, does some work in terms of out-of-district placements. Also, the school psychologist is just Walter Fitzgerald campus, and the ESS worker is just Walter Fitzgerald campus. The rest of the staff are just for Walter Fitzgerald campus. I should mention that there is a PE teacher who comes over for one block a day.
Oh, that's, that's good.
That's shared, yeah.
That's a shared.
That's a shared within the district.
The rest of the staff is all, is not shared, they're Walter Fitzgerald.
Those are all, every, every box there is a whole person who's there full-time, yes.
A whole person, not a third. ESS, you had made, we've spoke about that in the past.
Right.
Isn't that also at the other two high schools?
It is. What that allows us to do is actually have the effective school solutions in the larger school, and then for students who need a smaller environment and more wraparound during the school day, they come to the...
To all the high schools sharing that.
Correct.
That's great. In terms of like the curricula, field trips and stuff, where do you typically go? Where do you take the students?
It depends on the curriculum area and what it is that the teacher is covering at that particular point in time. So, you know, we've been, we've been many different places. We were actually at the park doing this whole forensics simulation. We've gone to the theater, we've taken the students to the museums, they just recently were at the Discovery Museum, and the maritime, I'm thinking about where else we were going off the top of my head, but those are some of them.
That's great. If you go to the theater and you need a chaperone, please call.
Actually, Long Wharf has...
Educational opportunities, they visit. I think it's important to note that while not all, many of our students in the past and now are, would be the first students and their families to go to college, and so, understanding that as part of their transition from school to what's next, we want to make sure they have the experiences of going to see what a college campus looks and feels like, so they do a lot of post-secondary transition work. Some of our students would not have that experience otherwise, and so, we try to introduce them and show them what options are after, after they finish this diploma that's been so hard-earned, what that gives them a key to.
Well, that's great, because hopefully, that makes them work even harder to get, to get there.
Correct.
So, right now, there's 34 students enrolled, right?
Correct.
I thought I saw a different number, that's why I just want...
It fluctuates. You're absolutely correct. It fluctuates. So, next week, there may be 35, or there may be 33, because right now, we're actually giving a tour on Friday to two different families.
Can you repeat that again, that I'm correct? I don't often hear that at the board table. I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Patton.
Well, kind of seguing into exactly what Donna was just saying in terms of, okay, so now you've got 34, 35 students, and I know it fluctuates, you know, roughly between that and 50. What's the full capacity, in your opinion, of the program with the staff that it has now?
I get that question. I get that question a lot. We've gotten it over the years quite a lot. It really does depend on, on how the, how the kids are coming together during the course of the year. At every quarter, when you add new students, things shift a little.
Dynamics.
The culture shifts, the dynamic shifts. We've never put a hard ceiling to say we won't take another student. We've never done that. When kids need us, we, we're there and the doors are open. In years when we've got up around 65 or 70, it's very tight there, at that, at that number. But again, when, when things are gelling well and the kids are coming together well, it works, but sometimes that can be difficult.
And what's the normal classroom size?
It varies depending on the content. We've had classes as small as four or five, and as large right now as 14, 15.
Okay, so that's, that's what I was guessing, is you'd probably want to consider the classes smaller.
Correct.
Yeah. Especially for the, the special needs learning. I had something else, no, I can't remember now. I guess that's it for now.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So just so I understand how these classes work, it's, it's interesting, because you have kids ranging from ninth through 12th grade, right? So this math teacher has to teach a whole array of math.
Correct.
So you might have a child who's taking calculus but has other needs, and then go all the way down to a kid who's just learning algebra, and then special needs also. So how many different classes? Like, that seems like a huge array for one teacher.
And it is. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
And we don't have the range of class options that, that are present at our regular high school.
Ah, so what are the options? Right. No, it makes sense, of course, because you have one teacher.
Not physically possible.
Right.
So we offer the core academics that are necessary for a high school diploma. So in math, it would be Algebra 12, geometry, Algebra 32. We've offered probability and statistics. Again, it depends on what our students, what our students present in terms of interest, capability, what level they're on in terms of their academic, and their academics. We have English 22, 32, 42, supernatural. We've offered, this year we're doing poetry. So it depends, it really depends on what our student population tells us in terms of their needs, but we, we offer the core courses so that we meet the diploma requirements, and then we have some opportunity to do some things, like a humanities class this year. Tim Wagner, who's here, is one of our social, who's our social studies department and teacher, actually has taught economics, so it really depends on the year and what our students present in terms of their needs, but we don't offer the full range.
Right. So, for example, so you wouldn't have pre-calculus or calculus necessarily offered?
Correct, but we actually do have Plato, so we use online learning to supplement some of the other courses. And I do want to mention that that's actually given our students the opportunity to take courses that may not otherwise even be offered. Last year, I think someone took anthropology, so we've had students take some courses of interest, rather than just courses that are in a catalog.
And get credit for it.
Absolutely.
As if it's a regular course.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's good. And how about science? What do you offer in the science?
Again, that depends on the year, but our course, science courses are biology, forensics, chemistry, and we have, on occasion, offered earth science, environmental science.
You don't offer physics.
Not at this time. But again, that would be something that if we had a population that we needed to create that, but when we have one science teacher.
Of course, yeah. And then I would assume that then you are also merging students of different ages, that age suddenly becomes less relevant than what they want to take.
Correct.
Okay, so then you have it merging across.
We have multi-age, yeah.
Right, okay. Yeah, very interesting, okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else have a question before I go back to Mr. Patton for a second set of questions? Anybody else have a question before I go back? Mr. Patton.
Mrs. Lou McCormick kind of sparked what I wanted to ask before. On the, on the flip side, and then you mentioned humanities, so if, you know, one or two students have interests in, you know, in the arts, photography, you know, computer stuff, or music, chorus, anything like that, they have to have their schedules built around, and they have to get shuttled back to the, the high school to have that fit in?
Most probably.
Okay.
But again, that, you know, in terms of priorities, we might, we might not be able to do that straightaway, and we work with the family and the student to make some logical decisions about that.
Does it, does that, I was going to say, does that happen often where, I would say maybe not so much music, but, but certainly like, you know, arts, or, you know, sculpting, or?
We've actually been pretty fortunate that one of.
Television classes and things like that?
Well, we've been pretty fortunate in that one of our teachers each year seems to have some background and experience with art, and so does teach an art course, but otherwise, we do, we do work with the other high schools in having our students go back to the schools.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's actually the fluidity that's, you know, that fluidity and that sense of, I'm, I'm a part of this community, it supports me, and I'm, and there's a larger community that I can draw from and be, be involved with and get my interests met by.
Also, part of the project-based learning piece, if there were a particular passion that a student showed, then part of helping them build their project might include connecting with a community resource who could help them with that passion and as part of their overall project. So, thinking about, with a student who might show an interest in, in music, for example, you might, they might develop a project that, that incorporated that passion, and then working with their teacher mentor to help develop that project, connecting them with not only potentially teachers at the high school, but also community members who share that passion as they build their project and then use that to learn from. So, that's part of the whole project-based learning piece, is being able to help students identify those core passion, those things that really drive them and motivate them, and then connect them to learning all the other core content and standards that might be available in an interdisciplinary way.
There was a, there was a, one of the sessions at the Cabe Conference this past month was kind of on project-based learning, and, you know, they, one school started at, you know, ninth grade and kept, you know, after, over the years, worked, worked the whole program into, you know, all four grades and had great success with it, and it's, I see that definitely as an enticing kind of thing, because again, you can't get that at the regular high school. This is where you go. I mean, you, like you said, you interact with the community, and, you know, there's a lot of life-based stuff there that you can kind of see what the real word is out there, and you're not sitting in a classroom all the time, so.
Our goal is actually moving towards interdisciplinary, project-based. We started, we started with the individual disciplines, we wanted to make sure that we had a good fundamental base, working with our curriculum, but then branching out and moving, moving through the connections, so that's something we're working on right now.
Great, I'll look forward to hearing more of that.
Okay, looking at the time, I'll make this the last question or comment. Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick.
I had this question before, and I forgot it. So at graduation, you had mentioned that you've had one or two years of response or ability. Have you had the ability to track kind of what, what the kids did afterwards? Were they able to go on to college? Were they able to get jobs? Because I would think that as part of this, as you're kind of mentioning along these lines, it might be great to kind of build out the vocational skills element of this for kids who just, I mean, you hate to say it, but not everybody is academic. Some people are great in the arts, or some people are great, you know, there's all in sports or what have you, and vocational, like, you know, there's all these occupations out there, and I feel like that academics don't prepare you to be an electrician or a construction person, or, you know, there's so many things.
You're absolutely right. We just had a presentation last week, because one of the things, you know, when we're taking students out to post-secondary institutions, that's one mindset. For many of our students, getting them connected with where their future passion is, is really the name of the game, so showing them some of the other things that are out in our world to study, be involved with, be connected with, and become, is actually part of the work. So, we don't have that post-secondary data. What I was talking about was simply stories that I can tell.
Yeah.
But that is something that we can gather, and we can look to gather over time. One of our students just came back who graduated last June and is, is enrolled in Eastern and was talking about how his, his projects that he's doing at Eastern are actually so strong, and he's, he was not a student who came in wanting to present. As a matter of fact, he was not a student who came in wanting to go to school, but is now doing quite well over in his, in his college courses. So, there's, there's a lot.
Post-secondary educational, it doesn't just mean college. It may mean internships and apprenticeships and skilled trade kinds of opportunities, so.
Because I think that's so important.
Just don't look at it in terms of the narrow, the narrow road of just a four-year college or university. The, the job is to try to help kids see their future, not ours.
And you know what, and I mean, on this thought of that is your thinking, I mean, this is so much more applicable to more than just these 34 students. I mean, how many kids possibly within the regular schools really don't fit that academic role? And yeah, they're doing it, but, you know, they might be awesome masons, or, you know, who knows what they could be doing, but it would be nice to be able to have the opportunity for them to see that. Like, so those internships and those apprenticeships would be super important to avail more students, you know, the opportunity. So I think that, that's great, if that's the direction you guys are going in, which I hope it is.
You finished? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation, the update, and the good work that you are doing at the Fitzgerald campus.
Thank you all. For all your support.
Sure thing. Onto item G, discussion and possible action on Board of Education bylaw amendments. I'll, this is enclosure number seven that's in your packet. There are three suggested amendments. I'll treat each one of them as a separate motion, and while it doesn't show the recommended motion on the agenda, I'll read that the Board of Education approve amendment number one, as shown on exhibit seven dated December 13th, 2016. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, do I have a second? Mr. Patton, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, this is simply formalizing something that came out of the Communication Committee, and as something that was accepted by the Board, it's something that we have now practiced, and I think formalizing it is a strong statement to the public of our interest to hear what they have to say on a diverse array of topics, and that they will regularly have the opportunity to do so, and that was the motivation behind amendment number one.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, as the seconder, do you wish to make any further comments, or has she covered it?
She's covered it.
Questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Llewellyn.
Quick question. So you note on here that the Board will hold semi-annual town hall meetings to be scheduled to the discretion of the Chair. So, the Board will hold semi-annual, are we going to have to, or is the having to discretionary piece, or is the timing discretionary piece?
It was intended that the timing was the discretionary piece.
So, can we modify that?
I think, doesn't the phrase "to be scheduled at the discretion," doesn't that define it as the discretion is to scheduling?
That's how, that's how it was intended.
Correct, but that could also be interpreted, I think, as whether or not their schedule is at the discretion. So, the Board will hold semi-annual meetings at a date to be scheduled at the discretion of the Chair, or something that? Do you see my?
Well, maybe even just putting a comma after meetings would make that more clear, that that's separating, it's putting the phrase then together of "to be scheduled at the discretion of the Chair."
Yep, that works.
If that could just be a friendly amendment.
Please, thank you.
It is now belonging to the Board. The Board with no objection. It's a comma at, after the word "meetings" and before the word "to."
That's grammatically correct, Miss English teacher?
Commas can communicate lots of things.
I put commas everywhere, so.
That is, all right, I'm starting on that one.
So, no, we're not going to go down that path.
No.
Any other questions or comments on this amendment from the Board? None? So, if no further questions, that the motion that's in front of you is that the Board of Ed approve amendment number one, as shown on exhibit seven dated December 13th, 2016. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous, nine to zero. Thank you very much. Amendment number two, that the Board of Ed approve amendment number two, as shown on exhibit seven dated December 13th, 2016. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly makes the amendment, Mrs. Gerber seconds it. Do you have comments that you wish to make on this amendment?
Just very briefly, it's all verbatim from the current bylaw until you reach the very end, number two. The idea of adding public comment at the end and taking out the public comment on "and new business." And I'm sensitive to the notion that I picture a public comment occurring when we actually reach the bottom of this agenda. I didn't know how to phrase it to take into account that there's such a thing as a meeting that has gone really, really late, and it needs to be abridged. This was just sort of reflecting something that had been brought up by members of the public, who might not have commented at the beginning of the meeting, but based on a discussion that they have heard, would like to offer something up at the end. I don't know if, if this one is even worth postponing till the next meeting, if someone wants to think of a way to rework that, because, again, this is a perfect example. By the time we get to the bottom of this agenda, we may extend, we may be at 11:20 and 11:30. That, the intent was, was to give the two opportunities, but I recognize that it's, that could be a challenge on certain nights.
True. Mrs. Gerber, as the seconder, do you wish to make comment?
No, just I support the amendment. I, I understand what Mrs. Cannelly is talking about in terms of concerns about going late, but, you know, just the idea of adding it at the end, I think, is something that a lot of people have suggested is something we should do.
Are there comments from the Board members on amendment number two? Mrs. Lou McCormick, followed by Mr. Patton.
Can you just explain the, when you strike the "and new business," what, what the purpose of that is on the number two?
Because if you look, for example, at our current agenda, are the current wording allows for comment after all, everything that would be contained within those two sections, and if we're going to have public comment at the beginning, at the end, before the type of voting items that are in "old business," we do have business to conduct, to be blunt about it, and that I thought that at that point, it's getting excessive, we're essentially almost going out for public comment, beginning, end, and after almost every single item we discuss, and I'm not sure that that's entirely respectful to our own time, or to the time of staff, or even to members who might want to comment there at the end. I just, I thought that that was a fair limit.
Mind if Mrs. Gerber piggybacks on that comment?
Oh, in response? Because I, I wanted to respond back to her also to ask.
You have the floor.
Okay, so, I guess my, my concern with that is, I always feel like whenever we get comments from the public, it seems that comments on "new business" is interesting because then it can feed into your thought process as you think about it, before we get to the next meeting where we further discuss it and vote. If you just hear the public comment only on "old business" right before you vote, you don't get the benefit of taking that information and thinking about it over a longer period of time and vetting it more thoroughly. And that's why I thought having "new business" is part of it, and having their comments on that earlier on is better, because then you can actually think about it and talk about it with other people for a week, two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is, before we meet again. That was my thought, but I know maybe you have a rationale as to why you think it's less valuable.
I think Mrs. Gerber wants to make a comment on that topic, so if you don't mind, we'll.
Well, I, I think that if you look at the entire sentence, "public comment on 'old business' will also take place following board discussion of those items and prior to any, any vote is taken." We don't take votes on, on "new business," and there will be an opportunity to speak to "new business" before, you know, at the beginning and at the end, so, and there will also be opportunity to speak to it when it is then "old business" at the next meeting. So, there are two opportunities at any, at any meeting to speak to "new business." So, I, I think we're providing opportunities numerous times.
And, and also to, to respond, it, to me, this is, it was streamlining it a bit. I agree that when, upon hearing, for example, that presentation, if someone that thought of something that they'd like to add, or say, or, you know, put into, you know, for our thinking, that was the idea, but of streamlining it, because that way everyone would know it would be at the beginning, at the end, voting items. I just think that for the sake of clarity and for the sake of a more efficiently conducted meeting, I thought this, that was the idea. So, and I would echo what Mrs. Gerber said, this is something explicitly that several members of the public have asked for, and so that was the motivation behind it. members of the public have asked for, and so that was the motivation behind it.
Other questions that you have?
Right, so, so, on that topic then, so, what you're suggesting is that new business could still be brought up independently in the beginning, it could still be discussed at the end, it just wouldn't be allowed to be discussed as it was being discussed during our meeting?
Right, because there's still the phrasing that it's, um, the public comment is on any agenda item. So, any agenda item at the beginning or at the end.
Okay. Alright, I, I would still think that, you know, I, I don't think we have that much, well, I guess we haven't recently had much public comment, um, about anything, really. So, to limit any of the comments, because then, a lot of times people like to hear the presentation before they make a comment, because it's new business, so they haven't heard anything about it yet. And waiting until the end of our meeting to make that comment, I think sometimes is a constraint, which ends up meaning that they have to come back to the next meeting again. Um, so just, I would say that right now, I, I don't know how flexible you are with this, I would prefer to just leave the new business in, and I do like the beginning and end addition that you have. That's just my thought, because from a practical perspective, people like to talk about it as it's being discussed, not like out of context in the beginning or at the end. And it also kind of puts a constraint on the public, and I think we want to encourage public participation versus make it onerous. So that's just my thought.
Okay, Mr. Patton?
So, several years ago, before we changed to public comments to what it is now, it was more like actually what Jennifer is proposing here, where we didn't offer public comment except for on voting items, which according to Robert's Rules of Order, that's, that's the standard procedure, and there was just public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So, I think this kind of is a good compromise to bring us slightly back to that, and at first, uh, I was in agreement with that, I was like, why are we taking new business? And, and like, well, no, the point is, is that all the important voting issues are old business, so they can comment on individual votes at that time, or they can comment at the beginning, and if there's presentations or whatnot during the meeting that have no vote, or there aren't a voting item, they still have the opportunity to comment at the end. Then to offer public comment at every single agenda item, I'm like, nobody does that in any meeting anywhere, it would slow the meetings down and make meetings take forever. This probably adds much more, um, than, than many Boards of Ed do. Um, and again, yes, we're keeping it to agenda items still, but that's why we have the, the town forum that we just approved, and that we've been doing anyways. And I think this honestly does really bring us closer, very simply, to what, you know, we had before that the public liked. So, I like it the way she has it.
Any other comments from Board members on the amendment that's in front of us? Mr. Llewellyn?
Uh, just as a point of clarification, so, if we look at today's agenda, we have voting items that are in the new business, so we're not excluding those. We're saying all voting items, as we've previously said, I just want to make sure.
All correct.
Also take place following board discussion of those items, and prior to when any vote is taken.
Correct. Any, any voting item will always have public comment, whether it's old or new.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board? If there are no questions from the Board, I will only make one comment, is, uh, public comment at the end of a meeting, um, can be problematic, because trying to manage the meeting, and when do we stop board discussion to allow public comment when we don't know how many people out in the public may want to comment? So if you don't mind, let's experiment with this as it is, and see if there is a timing problem with scheduling topics, and deal with it at that time. Uh, with no further comment, the motion that's in front of us is that the BOE approve amendment number two, as shown on exhibit seven dated December 13th, 2016. All in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Uh, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese. The motion passes seven to two, noting that you do need six votes, so the motion is approved. Amendment number three is a administrative fix because of the comment that we just, the vote we just took, that the Board of Ed approve amendment number three, as shown on exhibit number seven dated December 13th, 2016. Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mrs. Gerber, any comments?
No.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn?
Uh, I'd like to amend it to move public comment to before open board comment, because at the end of the day, I think I would prefer, if we're going to be running out of time to have the public comment, um, so, I'd like to amend it to...
But before you go down that path, are you suggesting to the maker of the motion that it's a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment would be good.
Except by unanimous consent, but if, if, if there's one person who doesn't want to accept it, then I would invite you to make the formal amendment.
Um, I respect Mr. Llewellyn's point, however, I don't accept it, because I think that it would be an invitation to have open board comment then be about that public comment, which could raise topics that members of the public have walked out the door, not thinking it would still be around the board table.
So it's not accepted, so, do you wish to, based on Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli's comment, do you wish to make it, put it forward as an amendment?
I do.
Then please do so.
So I'd like to amend the motion so that public comment is number 11.
And thus, open board and adjournment moved down?
To 12, correct.
Correct. Uh, you have that written down? Is there a second to that amendment? Ms. Carnell, um, you've made comments, is there any further comments that you want to make on your amendment to the amendment?
Sure, in addition to giving the public adequate time, I actually think it is better that the Board is able to respond to it when they want to at times, because we don't want to have a dialogue during the public comment, but, uh, there are times I think that people will want to respond. So I think it gives us the opportunity to address things rather than have, have them linger for a month.
Okay, other comments from Board members?
Just, just briefly, um, again, I, I respect the point of view, I would just reiterate my opposition to it, because if you have been, if someone's commenting on something that was a new business, and people who are interested in that topic have left thinking the topic is done, um, they're missing, a public comment is one thing, missing the board discussion who will be making that decision and casting that vote is another. Um, and I'm just, I think, I'm very leery of opening that door of swapping these, I think public comment should be the end of the meeting, so that's the explanation for why I would not be in favor of the amendment.
I don't understand it, can you explain it again? It's just clarification.
Because my experience on this Board, and just in using my imagination for picturing what could happen, if comment is made during public comment, and it is about an issue, say for example, comments were made about Walter Fitzgerald campus, which then prompted, because we as a Board have not always exactly respected the notion of open board comment, and have used it as open board discussion. That's not what open board comment is supposed to be at all. Um, and so, we shouldn't during open board comment be continuing a discussion of an issue that gets raised during public comment. I think that's an inappropriate use of open board comment, and yet it would be an utterly natural step to take if a member of the public says something, and we want to respond to it. That's not supposed to be, to me, that would not be the idea of the intent of that public comment. So, again, based on my understanding of what open board comment should be, as opposed to open board discussion, I just think we are setting ourselves up to use it inappropriately.
Okay, if that's further...
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, uh, if there are no further questions, this is a vote on the amendment to the amendment, which is to move, uh, public comment up to item number 11, and therefore renumber open board comment and adjournment. Everybody understand the amendment, the amendment that's on the table? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. Back to the original main motion, which is to approve amendment number three, as shown on exhibit seven dated December 13th, 2016. Are we ready for a vote? All in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. It's nine oh, thank you very much. Um, uh, so we have three sets of amendments.
Phil, can I say something? Thank you.
On that topic, because we're done with that topic?
Not on that topic, no. But, so I'd like to actually make an amendment, make a motion to amend the ad specs of Holland Hill from 504 to 462.
Uh, that's not, uh, that's out of order.
It's actually not, I'm allowed to make it, and we can vote whether or not it is.
Is out of order, because Holland Hill is not on the agenda tonight.
And by two-thirds vote, it can be.
It's out of order.
I'll second it.
Okay?
It's been seconded, Phil, it's not out of order. It's not.
Doesn't matter whether it's seconded, the motion is out of order.
But explain how it's out of order, please.
No, you don't.
We can make an emotion, and anything can hit the agenda with a two-thirds vote.
Okay, so you would have to add the topic of Holland Hill to the agenda with six votes, before we could then take a motion to take action on Holland Hill?
We've been through this before.
We cannot put an item on the agenda without, added, add an item to the agenda without six votes, so I've ruled it out of order.
I make a motion to add...
Ruled it out of order.
Fine, I make a motion to add the discussion of amending the ed specs on Holland Hill from 504 to 462, to be added to the agenda.
Is there a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you wish to, uh, explain why you want to add the item?
I do, I find it...
Not to debate the issue itself, just why it needs to be added tonight?
Yes, thank you. I'd actually tried to bring up the topic when we were talking about, uh, where it belonged on the agenda, which was back with the, uh, the building issues, um, because I think that watching the, uh, cost of this thing, uh, turn into a pet project for folks, and run from, uh, 10 million to 13.5 to $21 million, uh, kind of overnight, that we need to bring it back to this Board, so we can better define what our ed specs are. I think there's a, there are a lot of things I've seen on the map, or on the, on the drawing, that don't, that, that were not in our original ed specs. So I think it needs to come back to this Board, and the way to bring it back to the Board is through making an amendment to the ed specs.
Thank you. Um, is everybody clear on the motion that's in front of us, is to add Holland Hill, um, capital project as an agenda item, so that Mr. Llewellyn could then put a motion forward to change the capacity of the school? Everybody understand that as a motion? Um, it's a, it's a procedural motion. Okay, so all in favor of adding Holland Hill as an agenda item, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli. The motion fails three to six. Onto approval of the minutes. Excuse me, one second. I'm onto approval of the minutes, I have not recognized you for speaking, I'm onto approval of the minutes. I'm going to suggest to Board members that I read one motion that approves all three minutes, just so that we get through them, um, in a timely fashion. Is there any member of the Board that has, uh, an objection to approaching it in that fashion? That they are, that they want discussion on one particular set of minutes versus another? Hearing none. Uh, I'll say the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 10th, 2016, and approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 15th, 2016, and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 15th, 2016. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, discussion on any of the three amendments that I've just read? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve those three minutes, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, opposed. Uh, Ms. Carnell abstained. Uh, Mrs. Lou McCormick and Mr. Llewellyn. Um, okay, Superintendent's report, thank you very much.
I'm not going to. I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and extend the meeting to 11:20 PM.
Is there a second? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, uh, that cha, that requires six votes. All in favor of the motion to extend to 11:20, please raise your hand. Uh, Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, uh, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Uh, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, uh, is there an abstention? Is there an abstention?
You don't recognize me.
Alright, it fails, so the meeting's gonna be over two minutes.
Well, uh, the, the motion fails. Superintendent's report.
Well, I can feel the enthusiasm for a really long report tonight, so, I will keep it short, because it is only my seventh day. Um, just, I am, I have been working on transitions out to all of the schools, um, I think I have up to eight I've done in the seven days, and just really enjoying getting out in the building, but I'm trying to do one, no more than two in a day, so, number one, I can GPS from here to a building and get back, and actually remember where I went. Um, but it's been really great just to have the principals walk me around the building as well, and meeting a lot of the children. And I'll just say one more thing, I thought the Walter Fitzgerald was great, uh, tonight, I really enjoyed that, and that was one of the first sites I actually had the opportunity to visit back in, I want to say October, uh, when I was here, and, and I had the opportunity to talk to one of our students who was doing the community service out in our school, and he was just, he just lit up, talking about that experience for him, so I just wanted to share that. And the next meeting, the second meeting, I will be presenting the budget, and we do have a lot of senior staff here, and I'll just say publicly thank you to them, and they've done a tremendous amount of work, you know, this first semester with an interim superintendent, and also I'll say thank you to Dr. Tracy, because he did a great job looping me in, and they're really catching me up so that I'll be prepared on the 10th. Um, and then last, I'll just say, on January the 12th, we will have the brown bag, again, for the PTA, which I think has been a tradition, and that will be here at Central Office, so thank you.
Um, committee liaison reports, let me talk about Holland Hill. Uh, I gave each Board member a, an email that says, here's where I think the building committee is on it, and by the way, I'm using my GPS based 1056 as a, when we'll close, uh, at 11 o'clock. Um, the, I have represented that the majority of the Board of Education is still committed to a 504 score, school. Uh, if that, if that changes, I, I need five people to tell me that that has changed, but until this Board votes to change that, I am representing the town bodies, it's a 504 school. The building committee had some discussion on whether to change the capacity of the school, uh, with a couple of people suggesting it, but the building committee pushed back and said, no, we think for the same reasons the majority here felt, uh, that it should remain as a 504 school. Um, there was similar discussion at the Board of Selectmen, but I don't believe that there's, uh, interest on the part of the Board of Selectmen to push back, and clearly, uh, when it was last talked about at the Board of Finance, uh, several members of the Board of Finance thought we were, uh, inappropriately looking at 462, I was gonna use another word, but, so, so, that's where that issue stands currently. Probably the biggest area where our budget did not contemplate the amount of site work that would be required, I think our budget numbers in the, in the building committees are not that far off, except for in, uh, I'll say two specific areas. One is, we had some very targeted renovations of the building, and they have a broader look at how much of the building should be renovated, um, and they certainly did more work, once you get to design development, on the site work that it will cost specifically. Uh, we want to sprinkle the whole building, and the water line coming into the building does not have the capacity to do that, and, um, and so while we have a lot of experience with, uh, looking at what a classroom costs, uh, trying to figure out what site work is specific to that site is just beyond the capacity of our staff. So that's one area that clearly will require more money. Um, and, um, then they did add some spaces as a result of a program review, and I met with, uh, Tom Cullen and Sal Moravito and the superintendent, uh, to, um, review where that is, and the superintendent will be, um, calling, uh, getting in touch with the Chair of the Building Committee to, uh, have a meeting, to see if we can't get a meeting of the minds. Uh, clearly, the Board of Selectmen was pushing back at the number. One fact that you should recognize, based on a question that came earlier, their project budget rounded is $20,800,000. Our project budget is $13,240,000, that's in the waterfall right now. That is inclusive of what we budgeted of $250,000 for the portables, and what they have as a real cost of $299,700, roughly $300,000. The first phase that we agreed to of $1,240,000, only $250,000 of that budget was to put portables in. The rest was to design the whole building and get ready for Phase Two. Um, so, it, it's not their $20 million plus $1,200,000, their $20,800,000 includes the original $1,240,000. More later, one minute. Anybody else wish to make a comment on anything other than that? Ms. Carnell?
Do we have any idea why the project was pushed back 18 months?
The, uh, what they're talking about is... The, what they're talking about is escalating the cost of the project and additional 18 months. We assumed a 2017 start, they're assuming a 2018 start. Mrs. Gerber?
Excuse me, I didn't understand.
No, no, I'm trying to give everybody a chance.
I didn't understand your answer, we were supposed to start right after the summer.
Ms. Gerber, you had a comment.
Explain your answer.
I just answered.
I didn't understand it.
Forget it.
I didn't understand it.
It's, I'll talk to you after the meeting because it's 11 o'clock and the meeting is adjourned.